Hey Miranda, I don't know if you can hear me. Not sure if the sound is working yet, just want to let you guys know that may be intentional.
Honored Jesse, can you hear us now?
No, I can't.
Okay, perfect. So we're just getting a little settled and then we'll get started.
Sounds good.
Well, welcome everybody. Thanks for being here in the room. Thanks for being here online. And this is, actually remind me, we don't need to call a town hall to order, right? So we are, we are here and we're going to get going on a town hall about annexation. And I'll cover during this town hall, as you hopefully saw in the flyer and on our website. History, we're going to talk about history of the IGA, the Intergovernmental Agreement with Boulder County. Why it expired, why we let it expire, and its intersection with the comp plan, comprehensive plan. Then we're gonna get into a review of what the current annexation ordinance provides. And then the last two bullets cover, we're going to take public comment on suggestions for amendments to our current annexation ordinance. And you know, with what we did pass in December, what you like, what you don't like, and really specifically comments about amendments to make it better. And then taking public comment on recommendations for negotiating a new IGA with Boulder County. So you know, it's really not totally decided if we will or not. So we want to hear whether you want us to or not, first of all. And if so, what do you want to see in it? You know, above and beyond what we had before. We don't, you know, we're going to keep our comment, you know, we have three minute comment, kind of the usual. But I will say like, for the most part, you know, that, that other IGA did expire and it's really, it's past this now. And so as we talk about the annexation, and as we talk about our annexation ordinance, and as we talk about, you know, future IGAs, that it's a new, it would be a negotiation of a new IGA if we, if we go with it. And so we want to hear what you want to see in that and/or whether or not you want us to do it. And I would ask, yeah, you can take, I think, I think and hope and expect a lot of people are going to want to talk. So we will give three minutes for comments, but we won't do what we sometimes do during the meetings where someone has a lot to say and someone else gives them some other time. We're not going to do that. We're just going to really, you get three minutes. And hopefully you can say what you need to, and if you haven't, if it's not enough time, email us. They're like, we're not, there's no big decisions being made tonight. So it's bot@netherlandco.org. You can email us and tell us more of what, what you're thinking. And if you want, that can be put in another agenda, another time. And you know, our hope is also to have more town halls about this as we proceed. So thanks there, buddy. Hey Tanya, hey Eric.
And just to clarify, just to clarify, after each public comment, then it'll come to the BOT for comments and?
Yeah, yeah. If, if it seems reasonable or like you want it, there would either be comments or we might ask you clarifying questions that which is kind of like what we do, similar to what we do in a normal BOT meeting that we would ask for clarification or, or you know, respond if you have something you want us to respond to. But yeah, I just hope if you, if you, we're really not going to spend a lot of time talking about the IGA that's behind us. But again, if you want, if you have things you want to tell us about it, please email us. Or if you want to spend your three minutes doing that, just know that's not really, we're just kind of wanting to be in the creative space about moving ahead. So with that, I think the first thing we're going to talk about is a history of the IGA. I know some of you folks were probably there Monday. Apologize, I was out of town, so I couldn't meet it, but make, be there. But Dale Case, you know, talked about the counties, you know, and James and Kevin Mueller and so a few, and probably Eric. I just read the Cliff Notes because I wasn't there, but we, there was good talk about the history of the IGA, but we're going to talk more about tonight because some people weren't there, including myself, why it expired. That we can, I can speak to better myself, or all of us can, and in the intersection of an IGA with our comp plan. So with that, who would like to? Talk about the history of the, our IGA? Which one, this would be trustees, which trustee would like to pick that up for? Okay, no, that's all right. Neither was I. And Miranda, you might need to help me because like I wasn't in that part of town government back when.
We also have attorney madsen online.
Okay, great. So if we could, if we could get a little history, you know, the IGA, well, the history of the IGA that we had before with the county.
I'm going to need a minute if you're looking out for town staff to do it.
What's that?
Are you wanting town staff to do it? Because I don't, I'd have to pull up all my documents. Are you wanting the board to review that? Or you want town staff to review that?
Well, I mean, what we can talk about maybe is the more recent history because I know, I don't have the full history, you know. I wouldn't be good to talk about directly about the history of the IGA, but why we let it expire. And when we know that last year, well, it was set to expire, and help me if I'm wrong, at the end of 2021, right? And then it was extended. No, right, but, but it was, it was extended first.
Well, to make that policy.
It expired, I think, March 2022.
Correct.
And it was extended to December 31st, 2022.
Right. And in that time, we took that time to create, you know, research.
There was a question of whether or not to extend it, right? That was an open question. The board did not extend the IGA in a permanent way with Boulder County. For I think a variety of reasons, as Dale Case mentioned on Monday. One of the reasons was that the county was not actually prepared to properly discuss the matter, considering they had a turnover in staff as well as, you know, the, all the marshal fire issues and the COVID issues. And they kind of said they let the ball drop on that, which is, which is one thing. We temporarily extended it. There was a lot of debate at that time on the board of how long to temporarily extend the IGA. I think Tanya will verify that that was the case, right? Folks were debating it. And where we landed on as a board was December 31st, 2022. And in that time, we had to address our own annexation policies if the IGA were to expire on December 31st, which it did, right? We did not extend it beyond that. So that temporary extension happened and then it came and it went. And in the meantime, we ended up with our own revamped annexation policy. There was an annexation policy for town that was extremely minimal. This one is much more robust. I think it takes most things into consideration, many of those things that the IGA actually called for. But there are a few things that are different from the IGA. You know, triggering town votes, for instance, is one of the things that's different. Right. We don't, we don't anymore. That's different, right? So there are a few, few differences, a few similarities. I think to me, the key fact of our current situation is that we have an annexation policy that does not preclude an IGA with Boulder County that dealt with annexation. But we do not currently have an IGA with Boulder County. But that's to me where we're at.
And it seemed like, from my experience, you know, talking to one of the commissioners, well, the fact is the county didn't reach out to us about, you know, negotiating a new one until after, you know, until the new year, until this year. So it did seem, you know, they've had a lot on their plate with the marshal fire and many other things that it wasn't in their, it wasn't in their, at the front of their desk of things to do either. So they reached out to us and they also, what they told us, and I think the commissioners told Tom as well, you know, it's, they want us to decide on an annexation ordinance that we like, and they want us to know that we're coming in a more united front. And they're really here to support what Netherland wants. And when I did meet with Claire Levy, you know, our commissioner who covers our part of the county. Yeah, it was, it was encouraging, you know, to hear how much support they, you know, they're offering and, you know, and the things that they're asking for, or you know, that are concerned with seem reasonable. And at the same time, when I asked, you know, we, we had a few questions about details or things that could be part of an annexation. It was, you know, it was encouraging to hear some of her answers and what, you know. Again, that's all just initial conversations. So I'm not going to get into those details. But it would seem that there was support by the commissioners for us to have, go through the process we went through, quite honestly. That's what I've learned.
I mean, I guess it is also worth noting, just for the sake of total clarity, that we are still in a super IGA that is with the county and many other towns. It is a very kind of basic document that, at least as, as I've been told and advised over the years in dealing with our intergovernmental agreements, it's not a particularly strong document, right? That super IGA. So while we are still technically signatories on that document, it does expire, I believe, by October of this year. So that super IGA, I think, is unlikely to be renewed in its current form. I don't think that many of the municipalities that signed on to it would sign on to it again. Some I think have already pulled out. So it's unlikely that a super IGA will be on the cards, but we are technically still in one, which is just worth noting.
And the mayor, I talked to the mayor of Lyons, and they're also about to, you know, looking at possibly renegotiating a new IGA. And she's curious what we're learning and how our process is going to go. And she, she also wants to be a resource for us and let us know how their process goes so that we can kind of compare notes as we have, do our individual IGAs with the counties, county, so.
So one of the questions that we had and that's still kind of floating around is what is an IGA? Could anyone provide a, just a simple answer as to what that is?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go, go.
I've probably, I've looked at it for a while. And I talked with one of the commissioners this afternoon and asked exactly that question. IGA is obviously intergovernmental agreement entered in between us. It is?
Okay, just get it closer.
It's an intergovernmental agreement between us, or between county and one or more municipalities. And it literally can encompass anything that we think is important. For, we've got, we've got on the docket tonight that we're going to be looking at an intergovernmental agreement regarding placing to take a look at. There are, there can be any number of them. What they asked was two things. Number one, that we take a look at the priorities of Boulder County versus our priorities and see where they're in alignment and where they're in alignment. Get very specific about what our intention is and how it fits with theirs. And number two, whatever we decide on putting in there, that it be, that is close to unanimous support from this board and the community as, as we can get, is going to make them feel better about it. And it can be anything from annexation as one thing that comes up. But Louisville and Superior got into it over boundaries, a boundary violations of where a graveyard went and things like that. So it's really peculiar to locality. But it really, she said it's, it's there for everybody's protection and whatever we feel we need protection with, we should be explicit about. Things we want to yield and work with the county or things where we never in a million years want to deal with the county, just spell it out. That's all they ask. So it's, it's really a big jewelry box and we put in the things that we care about.
And it's a legally binding document.
It's a contract.
It's a contract. And one of the, the things that often comes up with discussions about annexation is the comprehensive plan. It's another one of those foundational documents. The last comprehensive plan was put together in 2013. And it articulates, you know, basically what Netherland wants to be when it grows up, right? The vision for the town and whatnot. And it is true that in the comprehensive plan, it does have a proclivity towards, or sways towards advocating for more infill, right? It mentions infill 11 different times. And when it does mention annexation, it's in a couple of spots, but it, it does refer to it. It doesn't say that no annexation, right? It just says that there's typically a preference for infill. But one of the things, and one of the arguments, and this is another point to clarify that comes up, is that people will often say the comprehensive plan is also a legally binding document. And we have been counseled that this is not true. It is not legally binding. It has a lot of words in like, should, and we, we ought to, and we need to consider. But until that language is actually codified and put into our code, it is not legally binding. And so that is oftentimes an argument that comes up and we want to be conscious of the comprehensive plan. And, you know, and some folks have said, well, this is what the people wanted the law to be. And again, understood, but until it's codified, it is not law. And so that is where historically the IGA has come in as a legally binding document to support our annexation. And when we let that expire, this is where we had to come in and come up with our own annexation ordinance. But if anybody else wants to add to the comprehensive plan, please do so.
Yeah, I mean, just codified in that, in the, in the NMC and the municipal code that we'll call out specifically. Often in criteria, you know, I was on the PC and the BZA for SRUs or, or, you know, different specific things that have to go through the process through, through the town government. There's often criteria and the criteria will say shall be consistent with the comp plan. And that's where it gets, that's where it's legal. That's where it gets codified. If it's in some kind of criteria in our code or specified in our code, that's how the comp plan goes from being unenforceable or not the law to the law. And we are also, you know, later tonight, we'll be talking about the fact that we're moving ahead to hopefully get more funding to help us with our next comp plan because our comp plan is 2013 and it's, it's time, it's 2023. So we want to get moving on our next comp plan so we can be current with that. And then I don't know whether these will happen, these would happen in tandem or not, but either way, you know, to tie, to, you know, to use the comp plan as our beacon or whatever to be clear on what we want with an IGA or for that matter, most of the things that we, you know, are focused on.
One, for folks that are, want to follow this further, the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, also known as DOLA, has a section called intergovernmental agreements. And they, they define it. They talk about what generally goes into it. They talk about why you do it. And it's, and what to think about as you're putting this together. I think it provides a pretty good framework for us making sure that, but in the end, we can tick off the boxes that we did our homework. There are some peculiarities that aren't here that, you know, that are peculiar to Boulder County, but there aren't that many. I just think they, they've got too many communities to deal with. And there's three commissioners handling $850 million with the budget. And they don't want to keep coming back to Netherland saying, what do you want? They'd like to, they'd like to have a document that governs things and they can refer to and trust. And I think we owe them, we owe everybody, we owe our community that and we, and ourselves. And we owe our colleagues that are, that have substantial resources and substantial control. If it's, if we don't define what it is we want, we owe it to ourselves to fix that.
Yeah. So I, I think that one of the ways that, in my opinion, we might have gone a bit astray is using an intergovernmental agreement as sort of a proxy for our own code, right? To try to use it as a political shortcut, right? To kind of cut off, pass our own code and go straight to a higher governmental authority like the county and say, well, they have jurisdiction over this because of this IGA. Therefore, we don't need to address this in our own code. And I think that that is a mistake. I think we do need to address it in our own code at every level, right? So if we have a comp plan, and the 2013 comp plan is still our comp plan, just because it's 10 years ago, doesn't mean that it's not our comp plan. Right? We don't have a replacement for it. Therefore, it is our comprehensive plan and we should treat it as such. But we need to use that comprehensive planning document as, as a kind of a beacon, as a guiding light for how we actually implement those ideas, right? Which means putting them into our code. And if we don't put them into our code, we're not doing it, right? The plan is not a plan and it's not anything if we're not actually putting it into our code. So to me, that's the key, right? Is that we don't use an intergovernmental agreement as a kind of excuse not to address our own deficiencies in our own code. We address that explicitly. We have our own policies. So that way, when we come to the negotiating table with a governmental authority like Boulder County, we have clarity on our side on how things work in Ned. They can see how that works. And then they can come to us with what they might offer us in return for maybe some yields on something that they want, right? Which might be us to annex less land, right? Could be, that could be one of the things. Doesn't have to be, but it could be. So to me, that's the process that we should be trying to engage with here, right? How do we get from planning documents to Netherland code, which then gives us the platform to negotiate with other municipalities? Right? If we skip that Netherland code part, then we're putting ourselves at a disadvantage.
Well, besides annexation, what was the IGA strangling us with?
I mean, I wouldn't describe it necessarily as strangling us. I know that others would. I think that the IGA was primarily centered on annexation. That was its, that IGA that we had with Boulder County was primarily centered on annexation. Didn't have to be, but that's what it was.
Well, Billy, when you spoke with Claire, what were some of her ideas for a new IGA that she wanted to see?
She, I mean, she was, the one thing that she talked about was, you know, just identifying, updating our planning area. You know, she's interested to know three mile plan and it's just something we need in place for sake of our annexation ordinance. And updating our planning area, you know, in and around the town so that they have a sense of, you know, where we're going or what, what we're thinking. And then one concern they have is just, you know, all the environmental impacts potentially, transport, you know, traffic issues, environmental issues, you know, any kind of like, like sewage runoff, you know, where things, where the town is up against county and things aren't contained in a way and just contamination basically, and, and issues with environmental impact. That's really overarching what she was talking about.
Yeah. And all three commissioners have told me the same thing separately, that it can work both ways. She said, what I, if I were in your shoes, what I would be thinking about is what, what do you want us as Boulder County to have for regulations for people building right up against your border? It works both ways. She said, we'd love to work with you on that, too.
They have pretty stringent building codes.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't think we'd have too many problems.
Yeah, essentially they believe because commissioners change out and over time and rules change. They, and these, these go for a long periods of time. He said, get specific, as specific as you, as you are comfortable with, to protect your own interests as well as ours.
I mean, you're right, they do, I can't remember how you just said it, but they do have strong codes in the county. And I mean, Claire said herself that, you know, when it comes to water, it's all water and septic. They don't have any, they don't have any sewer lines and, and you know, and there's homes that, that haven't been worked on recently. She, she knows, she realizes that their, their water and their septic, you know, can be a threat to the, to the county, to incorporated county as well as neighboring municipalities.
If it was in our water shed?
Where do we want to go with the discussion?
So I was actually going to go into a review of what the current annexation ordinance provides. So most of you, or some of you were participating with us and, and coming and giving comments and sending emails as we, as we were working through drafts of the annexation ordinance. And it's, it's pretty comprehensive. It lays out much more of a, of a process that engages the community, you know, the planning commission, the town government, town staff, the NXC or the, or the folk, you know, the group of NXC's. And it also includes the county. And so there's all these steps to go through the process that we put in place. And definitely, there's a couple of things people have pointed out to us that, you know, I think a lot, a few of us at least are like, yeah, that's, that's a pretty good suggestion. Maybe a couple of these things we, we need to look at or amend. or amend. You know, I think when we passed it, we said it's important we pass it, but we'll, we can change it, we can amend it as we go. If there's things about it and they need to be fixed, it's, it can be a living document in that way, you know, it's pretty strong document as it stands, but there's things about it that could, could be fit, could be better. And so Eric, do you mind talking about the annexation ordinance? Because it was kind of, you led the charge.
Well, it was, it was a learning experience because there's state law to consider throughout the entire process, right? I mean, the reason why we ended up laying it out as a step by step process is because there are timelines that we are obligated to meet by state law, right? And so if it were unclear to a petitioner, what those timelines would be, then they would be at a, at a significant disadvantage, I think. Similarly, if the town, planning commission, board of trustees and its residents were unclear on what the process should look like, it would be difficult to evaluate, right? Any petition for annexation. So we laid it out as a step by step process that includes referrals to all the relevant stakeholders. I don't think that we missed any particularly relevant stakeholders in that, in that document. I think that it addresses everyone from school districts to fire districts to Boulder County, to our planning commission, to our, our public planning process, as well as to the BOT, to neighbors of the petitioner who's asking to be annexed, et cetera, et cetera. So everyone is informed in a timely manner. There's kind of strict signage rules in, in terms of the property itself. It needs to be physically signed, that it is currently undergoing a petition for annexation. Like, there's a lot of safeguards in place to ensure that there's nobody who's caught blindsided, right, by any such petition and that we get behind when it comes to state law. So I think we've managed to put together a process that keeps us on track if somebody were to submit an annexation for a petition, sorry, a petition for annexation. The things that we really added in there were the specific documents that are required to be submitted. That includes kind of rigorous planning documents that I maintain would be documents that would be needed for any planned unit development or any SRU or any other such development. So I don't think that those are an additional burden. I think that the, the main burden on a petitioner in this particular case is, as I says, as I said on Monday, I think, is the uncertainty, right? You'd be petitioning to annex a property and you simply would not be sure whether or not your petition were to be accepted. And there's kind of two points of uncertainty that I think are, one is not up for contention and one is, right? The first point of uncertainty is that this is a legislative issue, right? It's not a quasi judicial issue, right? That means that this board, whoever happens to be on it at any given time, has complete and total legislative authority to deny or accept a petition for annexation for any reason whatsoever, right? We could lay out a whole list of criteria in our town code, right? And a petitioner could meet every single one of those criteria. The board could still deny it because it is a legislative issue, right? So that point of uncertainty is fixed by state law. That's just how Colorado works. No community in this state will provide much alleviation for that particular uncertainty, right? The second uncertainty is that we have a process in the annexation ordinance for a townwide election to be triggered, right? And that's the one that, that is an added layer from state law. Now, the way that that current process works in our current ordinance is 30 signatures are required to trigger an election of registered electors in town. And of course, the election would take place in town, therefore, you would, you would, within 30 days of the board's decision. So if the BOT decided, yes, this is in, this has community benefit, we want this annexation to occur, 30 people could put their name on a piece of paper that would be posted to the town website. It has posting requirements, the law has posting requirements within a certain amount of time, right? If 30 people sign that document, it would trigger a townwide vote. Again, that's a townwide vote. So folks who are just neighbors of the property in unincorporated Boulder County would not be able to vote on that, right? It's the town that's deciding whether or not to annex a property. And that is state law. So to me, the rest of the requirements in there, environmental impact reports, traffic studies, site plans, concepts, all the water rights issues, all those kinds of things that we've laid out in that, in that ordinance are all things that any responsible town should be asking for of a petitioner, right? One way or the other. So for me, those are not really up for debate. Perhaps there are things that we forgot, but I'm pretty sure everything that's in there is needed, right? Points of uncertainty are, it's a legislative decision and there could be a vote.
Eric, why did you add in, I didn't notice that during the time we were going through it, the clause where if the planning commission had to reconvene, they had seven days to do it, or it was an automatic approval?
So that comes, so it's seven days, this has been a, a point of some, I think, infusion in general in the community. Yeah. So it's seven days from the planning commission's meeting that is called for this specific topic, right? So a planning, it's referred to the planning commission from the BOT. The planning commission has a certain amount of time to provide a recommendation because of state law timeline requirements, right? So they, if they do not provide a recommendation within the amount of time that the BOT needs to make a decision, it, there needs to be some, some resolution for that. So this does not circumvent the planning commission in any way, right? The planning commission will meet, will discuss this, and hopefully at that meeting, will provide a recommendation. The clause that's in there simply doesn't allow the planning commission to defer making a decision, right? They have to make a decision at that meeting because state law has very specific timelines required for annexation petitions and how they can be processed.
What if they ran out of time or something?
I mean,
Like, we ran out of time the other day dealing with Ron Mitchell's thing.
It's, it's gonna have to, so
What if we had seven days?
It will likely be a special meeting. It's not that they have seven days to make a choice. They're, it's going to be referred to the planning commission well at advance of the meeting.
Right. I'm just saying.
So they can review the petition.
Is that seven days, the state law made that seven days?
Seven days is because of the way that we had the planning commission review structured in.
I understand, but that number came from where?
That number comes from attempting to comply with state law requirements for processing annexation petitions. State law doesn't require it to be for, referred to the planning commission at all.
Right.
Right? And so they don't even consider that. So they give you like 30 days to process this particular stage of the petition. And so we wanted a planning commission review within that timeframe. And in order to make it work, we needed to put some pretty strict timelines on how the planning commission could review it.
And they continue like to their next meeting or does that meeting have?
Well, that, that next meeting would be after the board of trustees already, already made a decision. So that would be pointless.
Because it, because it has to go back to the board and
Within a certain amount of time. So the planning commission must review it within a certain amount of time by state law.
So state law says when, when the application gets submitted, we have to do it in 30 days?
There's a, there's a, there's a few time requirements and I'm not going to cite them off the top of my head because I'll get it wrong. But there's a few timing requirements provided for by state law. In order to make them, in order to meet those requirements, we had to make sure that the planning commission provided a recommendation at that meeting or at the very latest, seven days after that meeting.
Okay, I guess I'll look that up and find out.
The point, the point of it though.
What the timeline, it seems a little tight.
It is.
Somebody puts in an application, we have to tell them yes or no in 30 days?
We have to tell them yes or no within a certain amount of time.
And you don't know, that's, so I'll look that up.
It's either 60, something like that, days in total that the whole thing goes through. But the board has to first affirm that it is a complete application before we can refer it to someone else. The BOT has to do something first, right? We have to see it, say, yes, this is real and it meets all the requirements of a, of a petition for annexation.
That's without any opinion, that's just
Right. That's just saying, yes, this meets the, the base level, right? And then we refer it on to our different stakeholders and different partners, one of those being the planning commission. This is to ensure that the planning commission provides a recommendation, not to circumvent them.
This is Attorney Mattson here. Can, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
So it is, it's 60 days. The hearing before the board of trustees is 60 days, must be set 60 days after the board of trustees determines that the annexation application is in substantial compliance. So that is a requirement under state law.
Thank you, Attorney Mattson. I thought it was 60 days.
Well, you're, you're doing a great job.
Not a right. But as you can imagine, if you looked at the steps, right, in that, in that document, there are a lot of steps.
A lot of
And there's a lot of things to do in a very small timeframe, right? Which is why there are kind of some strict rules for how the planning commission and other stakeholders can weigh in.
Attorney Mattson, is it 60 days from after the BOT determines all the documents are in order?
Are in order?
The, the public hearing on the annexation application must be set either no less than 30 days and no more than 60 days after reviewing all of those documents, determining that the application is in substantial compliance. And that's a term that's in the statute, substantial compliance.
Yeah, it really was quite a learning experience in that there were a lot of things that we wanted to put in there. And we had to make it match up with the laws that are in the state code, right? So everything kind of needed to be crammed to a very short period of time. But I think you'll see that it's kind of a very carefully calibrated ordinance that makes sure that we get feedback from all the relevant stakeholders, even though it's such a short timeframe.
Any more comments or, you know, from the board about what the current annexation ordinance provides? Because once we're done, we'll move to public comment about suggestions. Okay. So we'd like to open it up now for public comments on suggestions for amendments to this current annexation ordinance that we passed in December. Again, you'd have three, you'll have three minutes, state your name, your relationship to Netherlands and please, please listen to what you're thinking. Go ahead, Roger. We'll go in the room first and then we'll go online.
Are people giving comments on the IGA as well or just the annexation?
No, that'll be next. We'll kind of compartmentalize. This is specifically taking public comment on suggestions for amendments to our current, current annexation ordinance. You gotta be right on that little black line.
I'll have to push it first. Well, hey, very brief comments about the annexation. I was, I want to talk about the bigger issue, but I'll come back, I guess. Yeah, the annexation, we have chapter 15. It actually worked. We actually have, I just counted, since I've been 1981 in this town, we have done seven annexations, proposals for affirmed, seven, which we get segue into the IGA. So the new annexation agreement is much improved. I do it, but the, the other one did work. And just an example, a small thing that Eric did. So thank you, Eric, for doing all that work and staff. But some of the things that he said now you have in writing, certainly you would have sat down there as a board and said, well, we need this, this and this, and require that of staff or of the applicant. So maybe we did it in reverse, but certainly the footprint was there. It wasn't bad. And we actually used it seven times successfully. So that's it. So, but thank you. I think it is a good one. And I have no, I worked with the planning commission, we approved it. So, yeah, it, I had no comments on that. I'd rather talk to you when I come up at the IGA.
Thanks, Roger. Anyone else in the room like to offer a comment? Three minute rule, Kayla.
1250, Kayla Evans, 1250 Eldora Road. I was trying to formulate what I was going to say tonight when I was in the shower. I always do my best thinking in the shower. And I, brick and mortar is not the only thing that makes a community. It is also the people that are here. And we are hemorrhaging a lot of the people in this community because they don't have a place to live. They don't have a place to live that they can afford. They are having to move. They are downsizing as seniors and there isn't any place for them to downsize except to leave this community. I, I appreciate what you're doing. I know you're working almost as hard as I am on annexation. And I look forward to working with you guys. I just, I want to ask Roger, how many of the eight annexation projects that have gone through in the last however many years went to a vote of the people in this town? How many of the places, the Boulder Valley School District and the town water treatment plant that's next to it did studies on elk migration? How many of, you know, I would like there to be parity and there to be an equal amount that certain projects aren't being penalized because of the timeline. I, I certainly understand that codes change and I certainly understand that we are upgrading and trying to make things safer. But I hope that the town appreciates what it's going to take an applicant to bring something into the town the town needs. And I don't know if y'all really realize how much this town needs affordable housing. So I look forward to the process and I'm under my time. Thank you all. And onward and upward.
Thanks, Kayla.
Kayla, specific question?
Nikki, Nicole's got a question for you.
So did you have a specific request in terms of the current annexation ordinance as someone who would potentially be an applicant? Is there something that you would request?
I'd like a suggestion for amendments specifically.
I would, I would hope that the town takes control of the process and that we're not dictated to by the county more than anything. Because I think we know what we need. Boulder County does not know what we need. And even if they know, they are not going to be as sympathetic as one of us, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Jonathan Baumhofer, 399 West Third Street. Appreciate all the work you've done. Eric, this is a great document. One question I would have is where did the 30 individuals being able to have a petition, where did that number come from? Currently, on our town website says we are a town of a population of 1,500. I would think that 10% would be a minimum number of signatures to challenge an annexation policy. I believe if any annexation in this town were that controversial, it would not be hard to get 150 signatures. So as a town of 1,500, right now, 30 people is 2% of our town population. I think that's, that's too little. And that, looking at the history of this town and how controversial everything is, from pulling noxious weeds on the side of roads to, I mean, houses that are going up that nobody in town has any right to say anything about, you should require far more signatures than 30. It should be at least 10%, if not 20. 20% would be a fair democratic process.
Wasn't it based on, many people vote?
It was, it was based on 10% of, well, it was based on a percentage of the, the people who vote, who had voted. And I think that number was six, around 600, you know, at the, I don't know whether it was in the November vote or which, but there were 600 people. And so there was a norm, somewhere it was 10%. Or when we were discussing this, we talked about 10%. And the idea was if we were going to take away an automatic triggered election, we wanted to make it simple. You know, the other option was going to be just, there will always be an election. And so what we wanted to be was fairly simple to have one if, if, you know, that was the idea with the 30. Fairly simple to have one if, if people wanted it. So instead of the 10%, we cut it back to 5%. You're right, it's really more like 2% or more, yeah, when you look at the total population. But, but registered voters, that, that 600 was the number that, that we got. And then we, instead of keeping it at like 5%, I think we just said 30, knowing the town might grow some. And the whole idea was to make it simpler for an election, which may or may not have been the right way to go, but that was the
So I think the way that it works now is just about anything can be challenged with 10% of the voters from the last election, right? So 10% of the voters from the last election can at any point sign a petition and make So 10% of the voters from the last election can at any point sign a petition and make us reconsider anything, right, to a town vote. So that's already in the code, right? So that's why we didn't do that, because it would have been redundant. That already is the case. There was a debate into whether there should be a triggered election for a certain kind of, kind of annexation, right, like a certain size, for instance, of annexation that made up a certain, that would increase the town's footprint by a certain percentage, or that would be a certain number of acres, or that would be a density increase. Like, there was lots of ideas that were thrown around. That was a compromise solution for the board to pass this, basically, was that there were folks who were not in favor of a triggered election, and there were folks who were in favor of a triggered, in favor of a triggered election. The compromise solution was to have the amount that currently the town requires for anything to go to a town vote. That's why it is what it is.
Okay, because we only have 500 people vote at a maximum, so then it's 10% of that 500, basically.
Right.
Well, it was even, and we cut that in half, actually, to make it.
This is Attorney Madsen. I just want to chime in to make sure that the statement on the law is correct. It's a referendum process that is spelled out in state statute, and it's actually 5% of the registered electors of the municipality registered on the date of the final publication of the ordinance. So that's what it is.
Yeah, so, and that was 60 people, right? And so we halved that as a compromise solution.
Thank you for answering that question. Awesome job with this.
Thanks, Jonathan.
James?
Thank you all. I would be in favor of an addition of a vote.
Do you mind just amplifying yourself for folks out there?
My apologies. James Ross Thorne, Netherland resident, Big Springs, Parker Road. I would be in favor of a election on annexation across the board because it goes against the vetted document of the comprehensive plan. I think if you're going to go against what the current document says, you should have approval of the people of the town, just because we have a stated document that says we favor infill over annexation. I think most of the applicants for annexation, in my experience, come to the town of Netherland because they are dissatisfied with what they get from Boulder County, which makes me a bit suspicious of why they're approaching us. And in addition to an open election, because it goes against our comprehensive plan, which is a vetted document approved by the people of Netherland, I would like to see an estimation of the cost associated with annexation going along with it. I don't think we have the resources for annexation of unbuildable property. I know there's debate about that, but I don't think the actual costs are being incorporated into the annexation issue. You don't have to look any further than the agenda for the Board of Trustees meeting that follows this to see how long these issues can extend. You know, the egress to Big Springs is a 50-year-old issue. I think the projection I saw was $900,000. That's how much, and that's, that's beside the sewer lines and the paving of the roads that we were promised decades ago. And I think that these issues go on for decades. The cost can run into millions of dollars, and I think a cost estimate projection and timeline that goes along with that should accompany any annexation process. Thank you.
Thanks, James.
Go ahead. I mean, Miranda looked like she was about to jump in there. So the issue with that is that we do, we rely on town staff for that information, basically. And Miranda, correct me if I'm wrong, right? But fundamentally, we do require, as state law does, for, for larger annexations to have an annexation impact report, which includes projected costs to the taxpayer and to the town. We rely on town staff to estimate that cost currently. There is not another mechanism that I know of that we have to do that.
No, I mean, Townstop will obviously use on-call engineers and other on-call consultants, but we do not have additional means to secure subject matter experts. So we really work on the, the resources that are at our current disposal.
I suppose based on the whole Big Springs issue, we would require egresses out of any subdivision that's built? Is that in the annexation code, or is that just a given?
Well, I think that's something that the Board of Trustees would have to evaluate. And I think as town staff, we would provide an assessment, along with the fire department would be one of our resources, is to see what their assessment is on whether it can be effectively evacuated, or if there was a need for that secondary egress.
As well as the mandated traffic study.
Right.
That would be conducted by a third party.
Noah?
Ron Baumhofer, Netherland resident. I am curious about the three-mile planning. I'm not sure where that fits, but I know that Tom mentioned that is something the commissioners wanted. That three-mile planning document that was put out a couple of years back is the exact thing that triggered absolute panic among people, residents of unincorporated Boulder County, who thought that the town of Netherland was coming after their neighborhoods down, you know, Middle Beaver Creek, you know, right down here, up on Hurricane Hill, et cetera, because that three-mile, it got a ring drawn around it. And I think it's super important to keep in mind, I don't know how this affects your document or if it's an amendment, but how do they ask for that without people, how do you get people to understand that it's the person who want, that wants to annex comes to the town with a request, and the town does not go after properties to be annexed? So that, that concerns me. And to Mr. Rothorn's comment about an automatic election being triggered, if only 500 to 600 people vote for our town leaders, how do you expect a town of 1,500 to be informed on all the nuances? People, it's just, they tend to be, get all up in arms about the negative without knowing the facts, and that, to me, is a concern. So those are two points that I would like the board to consider in going forward, and to, just to think big picture, because just as development in and of itself is not positive or negative, annexation in and of itself is not positive or negative. And I would just hope that any board considering an annexation would consider each project on its own merit and how it benefits the town. What benefit is there? And to think about the collateral involved, not just the environment, but the people. Because when you limit growth, prices rise. And you have, even if you want retention of employees and fire department and police and teachers, we talk about this all the time, this isn't a housing discussion, you have to have, they have to have places to live that they can access easily on their, on their salaries. And I, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Anyone else in the room?
Just to clarify, because this is an important point, and this is something we had to reiterate at our Monday community engagement discussion, is that annexation is absolutely not about the town coming to grab land. It is not a change of ownership. And I, and it is important for us to repeat this, because even some of us as BOT members have been impacted by that, how that went down. And so it is, it is fundamentally a change in taxation. It's a, it's a change in potential services that the landowner may receive, but it is not a change of ownership. So if we, we'll, we'll keep saying it if we need to.
And, and we do need to. I mean, because I think if we do another three-mile plan, you know, we can hopefully alleviate that panic. I mean, I was, to be honest, I was, you know, no annexations came across our desk when I was on the PC and the BZA, but up until shortly before I ran for this office, I thought annexation meant the town could come take it away. And so that, that lack of understanding is, is much more widespread than we want it to be. So our job will be to continue to make that clear to people. And if we do a three, as we do a three-mile plan, we really need to educate folks and do, use our public engagement to really help folks understand this isn't about seizing property.
There's a difference in annexation and condemnation, because.
That, this breaks our, our, there probably is a difference between annexation and condemnation. Please email us and tell us what it is. Thank you. Is there some, I don't mean to cut you off, but wait.
It could also be worth just addressing the three-mile plan, because a three-mile plan, as I understand it, and Attorney Madsen, correct me if I am wrong here, but I believe a three-mile plan used to be required of every municipality in the state of Colorado by state statute.
It still is required.
It still is required.
Correct.
And we don't have one.
Correct. So the Planning Commission did talk about it in January, and that is something that is going to have to come back before them. At the time, we really just had the kind of a preliminary discussion. I think the feeling, and maybe the commissioners can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we will bring back a three-mile plan for their review and then bring it forward to the Board of Trustees for approval. I'll talk with Chair Williams about that a little more, because there were preliminary conversations, and it is in fact required.
And just to follow up on that, is a three-mile plan required to approve an annexation petition?
Yes. Before a final adoption, you have to have your three-mile plan in place. And so in recognizing that the super IGA is set to expire, it would, it's in town's best interest, you don't have to, but it's, it's preferred to have our three-mile plan in place, at least by the fall of this year.
And so what I, I ask these questions, if only to make the point that it is part of a required process for our town to have a three-mile plan. So I would ask that folks not attack just the very notion of having a plan for three miles outside of our town, right? We have to do that. That plan could say, we are going to do nothing three miles outside of our town, right? It could say that. That could be the three-mile plan, right? Very much, it's very much possible. I just want to make that very clear. However, we still must have a three-mile plan, right? So please get engaged in the three-mile planning process at every stage that you can, at the Planning Commission, here at the BOT, and in any other fora that you see fit. However, don't attack the idea of having a three-mile plan, right? We need that.
Maybe trustee comes his mouth, I just have a quick, it's like three sentences. So a three-mile plan is a long-range planning opportunity for municipalities to consider where they want to annex, how they will provide services to the newly annexed areas, and how they will sustain adequate levels of service throughout the rest of the municipality. It ensures that the municipality will annex land only when it is consistent with pre-existing plans for their surrounding area.
So that's defined, as top of my emails pinned to the top. Roger had sent an email to Miranda and Steve, they got forwarded to me, and DOLA, like Tom said earlier, DOLA does a great job of laying out definitions of what things are. And what's great about them, you can go to their website, they have all these resources, they're really easy to kind of find your way around, but they define the three-mile plane, it's a page and a half document, and it's real clear, and, and that's, that's the first paragraph on the definition, and it also talks about, you know, why don't we, what if we don't have an updated plan and all the.
And one thing I'll add that came out of the Planning Commission was a question about whether we would need like a third-party consultant to help with the three-mile plan. Kind of across the board, the feeling is no. We have the capabilities within our own teams and DOLA support and Attorney Madsen and Attorney Widener to be able to develop a three-mile plan ourselves without having to secure a consultant to do so. So that's where we would want to bring it back to the Planning Commission to work on that.
How big is town of Netherland? How many miles is it?
Mile and a half.
So like to, to consider a three-mile circumference around the entire town is, that's crazy. I like the do-nothing.
Right, I mean, it, you know, it's the same law for, for, for a giant town or a small town, right? I mean, sometimes that's the way state law works.
Mayor Billy, you do have people online who are interested in giving comments?
Thanks, yeah. I think, here, I'm looking online here. Who's that? Susan, I see your hand up. Oh, yeah. Rich, actually, there's one more person in the room, and then.
Oh, okay.
And then you can speak. Go ahead. Thanks, Susan.
My name's Rich Blatnick, and I want to say to the board that I very much support you developing an IGA with Boulder. I think one of the things that provides to you is a resource of a county that, that the town of Netherland can afford or does, or have. So I think that kind of a, an agreement could be a benefit to both the town as well as, as the county, because it helps them manage the totality of Boulder County. The other thing I'd like to say is that I've heard several gentlemen, or sub-several people today, talk about an annexation requiring a vote of the people, and I very much support that. And when you think about it, any annexation will have lasting impacts on the quality of life of Netherland, utilization of town resources, the utilities, support of town services, town safety, taxation, and other financial matters that relate to the operation of the, of the town. So I very much support a, a vote of the people if we do annexations. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the room? All right, Susan, three minutes.
Okay, I have a few legal questions that are pretty quick, I think.
Who, who are you for the folks?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Susan Wagner. I live on a 10-acre mining claim on the southern border of Netherland. It's in a wildlife corridor, and that is in the Magnolia Environmental Conservation Area, one of 14 such areas in the county. And I want to make it clear, I absolutely understand annexation's voluntary, and I have stated, it's a little frustrating to me, some people may not know, but I, many times, I just forwarded a couple of people, comments I made back in 2019, trying to explain why I oppose annexing land in a wildlife quarter. But anyway, here are my questions. One, so then listening to the timeline and thinking in terms of what the law requires, Attorney Madsen mentioned that you have to have a public hearing no less than 30 days and no more than 60 days after the BOT finds the applications in substantial compliance. Now, two questions there. One, is that assuming that the Planning Commission makes its recommendation before the public hearing? And then I, and then, so, and then I want to know, so after the public hearing, how many days after the 60 days after the public hearing, does there have to be a final decision? Does that make sense? At what point in this 30, between 30 and 60 days, does the Planning Commission have to make its decision within seven days? And then after the public hearing, how many days before a final decision? That's for Attorney Madsen, if.
And just a reminder that Attorney Madsen will only respond if the board directs.
Never mind, then, let me, let me just put that.
Actually, go ahead, do you want to pause the timer? Jennifer, do you want to answer that?
Yes, sure.
Okay, never mind, go ahead and get your questions out.
Okay, because otherwise I'll run out of time. Okay, so I want to ask why the Planning Commission's failure to make a recommendation isn't just considered a failure to make a recommendation. Why does it have to be considered an unconditional approval? I think it's probably important, maybe they'll be deadlocked, for example, and I think that it should be clear that they didn't come to an agreement. The other thing is, this issue of whether the comprehensive plan has to be in the ordinance in order to be binding in any way. Mayor Billy, you mentioned that when the comp plan is mentioned in an ordinance, then that becomes its legal implementation. Well, this annexation ordinance does refer to the comp plan, that it, that it has to be in, has to be in compliance with it, and it's, the comp plan has very specific consistency about annexation. The vote, I just want to say, every single public comment I saw wanted a vote, and at the meeting where it was rejected, and they said, oh, we're gonna, anyway, I'm unhappy with the way it was rejected, it was anti-democratic, and I think there should be a vote. It was always in the ordinance. And let's see, the last thing was sewer and water, we need facts, just facts. I've heard so many different things, Big Springs isn't on our sewer systems, they say it has to be before we annex. They said Ron Mitchell had too many houses in the downtown to be on the water, but this big project outside doesn't. Anyway, that's it, facts. We need more facts about our infrastructure and sewer.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Jennifer, would you be willing to answer a question about timing?
Yes. So the Planning Commission meeting is going to be before the hearing on the annexation So that'll, that'll take place before. And then the hearing on the annexation ordinance, there needs to be one hour of testimony on that public hearing, and then it could be continued to a later date. So there is no timeline in state statute, which requires the Board of Trustees to make a decision on the annexation ordinance, once that hearing is set. It could be. It could be continued.
Okay. Thank you. And what about, is this a legal issue, having the Planning Commission give unconditional approval if they make no recommendation, or is that just a town, the BOT's decision in the ordinance?
That's, that is, it's a, a policy decision, state statute does not require referral to the Planning Commission. So it's just that if it's, there's no decision at all, it's deemed a, an approval.
So that's a decision by the town, that's a trustee decision, that's how they want to do it, it's not required, but they've decided that if the PC doesn't recommend anything, that they'll consider it approval.
Yes.
They could consider it a deadlock or not an approval. So, okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Thanks, Susan. Well, I'd like to talk online.
Could you answer the question about
You know, I think we're going to move on, I think
But it was, was a legal question about, it does include the comp plan in the annexation ordinance, and yet people there are saying it's not legally binding, but you said it was, because it's in the annexation ordinance, says it must be in compliance with the comp plan. Anyway, that can come later, but this issue of how we, you know, it's a big issue. Okay, go ahead. I mean, I'm signing off.
I do think it's worth, worth mentioning that most of the language in our code, when it refers to the comp plan, refers to either general compliance or substantial compliance with the comp plan, right? Not kind of a dogmatic word-for-word compliance. It's worth noting that this is the case. One of the reasons why this, I think, often gets written into the code this way is because of the way that the comp plan itself is written. It does not use definitive language in a lot of cases, and because it does not use definitive language, it is difficult to use it as law. That is something that I do think is worth questioning in town when we do our comp plan revision, right? We may want to revise our comprehensive plan to be a little bit more explicit in certain areas, so that we can rely on it more when we're evaluating quasi-adjudicial matters, when we're evaluating other legislative issues that are brought before the BOT. So that's just something I want to say. It's something we might consider doing as a town, is making our comp plan a little bit more definitive and a little bit less vague in terms of how it phrases what we want to do as a town.
Yes, so it's, we don't keep getting stuck in these, you know, back and forth, absolutely, making it more specific.
Who else online?
Eric.
Eric?
Yeah, hi guys. Eric Davis, Netherland resident, McMillan neighborhood. So we started this conversation, or you guys started this conversation, by talking about the IGA, and there wasn't a whole lot of clarity about why the IGA existed, or at least it didn't seem like some of the folks here had a real good idea of why it existed. I would encourage the town to really explore that. I, I have a little bit, I've talked to some of the former BOT members who were instrumental in putting that together, and I think it's worth sharing some of their reasons for that. The primary reason, you know, this is Rich Tillitson and a few other Board of Trustee members at that time, the reason why they negotiated this way was because they understood the very short-term nature of their own roles as Board of Trustee members. They also experienced high turnover with people leaving, having appointees. And when I look at the current Board of Trustees, you know, there's, there's not a lot of experience, and I, please don't take it the wrong way, I'm really appreciative of everything you do, but there is a lot of turnover, and Karen Blakemore left, for instance, so that, that was negotiated to get a longer-standing government body in place to help protect longer-term visions and longer-term, you know, tie that things to the comp plan in a way that a short-term Board of Trustees wouldn't necessarily be able to do if it experiences high turnover. I think that compla, or I think the IGA was also really valuable in, in two points that, that aren't, that don't exist in the current annexation code. One, it pushed a part of the decision-making power to the county, which did use its longer-term resources, longer-term planning, and, and, you know, examination of our comp plan, and it gave them a voice in the manner which is important. And it also referred this to a public vote, both of which don't exist in the current ordinance. And so I would encourage the group to consider adding those two key decision-makers back to the process. I'd also encourage, you know, Eric, you mentioned substant, there could be substantial compliance with the comp plan, or there could be language that refers to the comp plan in the annexation code, and I would hope to see that, you know, that document referring to the comp plan in the substantial compliance way, just to ensure that we're, you know, staying on track with our long-term vision as a town. I really think we could be the example for small mountain towns, having smart development, avoiding sprawl, using infill, just, you know, being thoughtful with our development as much as we can. Thanks, guys.
Eric, can I clarify something?
Thanks, Eric.
Hey, Eric, were you meaning to, to say that I would hope to see that our current annexation ordinance refers back to the comp plan? Is that what you were suggesting?
Yeah, I think I heard Eric mention, you know, you can have policy that refers to the comp plan in certain type of language, and you can have, I think you said, substantial compliance with the comp plan, or some other form or, you know, language pointing to the comp plan. And, you know, if we're going to cut out decision-making bodies like the public and the county with, you know, who might have long-term vision on their horizon, or on their, just, you know, how they make decisions, it would be nice to see that the annexation code at least includes strong language about needing to be an adherence with the comp plan. Maybe that already exists, I haven't seen the latest version.
Thanks for clarifying.
Anyone else online have any comments? On, specifically on suggestions for the amendment?
Teagan.
Suggestions of amendments for our present annexation ordinance? Who's that?
Teagan.
Teagan? Go ahead.
My name is Teagan Blakemore, I live in the Magnolia area around Netherland. I attended school in Netherland, I led a nonprofit in Netherland for close to a decade, and work part-time in Netherland now as well. Thank you guys for holding this meeting and giving the public a chance to comment, as well as a chance to answer questions. I appreciate that. I also want to just kind of second the comments that I heard James make earlier, as well as Eric just now. And kind of what Eric was saying, there has historically been quite a lot of turnover on the BOT, which, when we're talking about making big decisions that affect the town as a whole, it does lend for some concern about the longevity of who happens to be on the board at that certain time. You know, I think it's apparent in all governments, and hence the reason for policies and binding legal documents is to kind of ensure a longer-term vision beyond who happens to be in office at a given time. You know, in the last few years in this country, I think, you know, as a nation, we've seen a lot of efforts to kind of erode the ease with which people can participate in our democracy. And while many of them are legal, they don't lend themselves to supporting our democracy and encouraging more people to participate. And I would like to see Netherland standing for that potential of having more people involved in town and in our democracy than fewer. You know, I think democracy should be the default, rather than a challenge. And to that end, you know, I think having a town vote, when an annexation is over either a certain amount of land or density, whatever the measurement may be, I think there should be a default in letting the people express their views on that. I think Thomas Jefferson said something along the lines of, you know, rather than take away a privilege, educate people. And I really, I fully stand behind that. I think when it is made harder for people to participate, the understanding is that there is a fear that the people will not go along with what is on the table, which, in my view, says maybe they have good reason not to. So, yeah, I think that's, just wanted to kind of echo those concerns, and also the support that there should be consideration of egress in and out for annexations over, you know, over one household's worth. So thank you for the time today.
Anyone else online have any comments? Okay. If there's no more, if there's no more, oh, actually, okay, we're moving on to public comments on IGA, so.
Can I just address one thing?
Well, I, I did, I did ask people not to, but we are about to accept public comments on the IGA, so that would be a time for three more minutes. Okay.
I've heard Jonathan Baumhofer, 399 West Third Street. I've heard twice this referred to about egresses being considered in IGAs in annexation policies. I'd just like to refer this board back to the fact that egresses are addressed in subdivision policies. Any large annexation would be under a subdivision. Subdivisions are defined under the subdivision ordinance. So the egresses are already handled in a different part of code. This is one thing that this board really has to hammer on, is that different codes address different things, and no one code supersedes another code. So if there is a policy addressed in a code, such as the subdivision, it does not need to be readdressed. This was an issue with the short-term rentals as well, of looking at good neighbor policies with looking at how many people can be in a household. That is also already addressed in other town ordinances. So this board would do well to familiarize themselves with that and be able to answer those questions to folks suggesting that. That's just my suggestion.
Thanks. Anything about the suggestions for what you'd like to see in a new, in an IGA, or would you want one?
I would personally, right now, until we do a new comprehensive plan, I would not want to see another IGA with the county. I believe that the county has far too much on their plate to actually meet you all at the table and a substantial fashion. Last time we were discussing the IGA, I was on this board, and it was a lot of work for both town staff, as well as the mayor, as well as BOT members, to be able to do special meetings. I believe that this board is already dealing with a lot of issues, from needing to increase the water and sewage plant, to dealing with multiple development proposals in town, as well as looking at having to potentially increase the capacity of our current water and sewage facilities. So bite off chunks you can chew, otherwise you're just going to spin the wheels, and this town has been spinning its wheels for 10 years. Have an event horizon you can actually handle, and only bite off what you can chew, otherwise you're going to let the rumor mill go, and you're not going to ever be able to achieve functional ordinances. So I would suggest not going at an IGA with the county right now, and let the county come to you when they want an IGA.
Thanks, Jonathan. So public comments on what, whether or not you want an IGA, and if so, what you'd like to see in it?
James Rostorn, Netherland resident, Big Springs. Actually, we are negotiating an IGA with Boulder County, it's with the police department. So actually, one is actually in negotiation, it's one that I favor, and I think it's one that's a benefit to us, and I think it's a great example of where we can meet Boulder County and make progress. I think there are other areas outside of annexation. I had, was given the opportunity by Nicole to actually make a presentation of, you know, four major points. In addition to Boulder County sheriffs, you know, I think there's a lot of room for negotiation with Boulder County around busing and parking, and, you know, maybe integration with our high school around training of future police officers from Netherland. I think there's so many roads, there are so many areas that Boulder County has long-term expertise in, that they could be of consulting help. Maybe they could help us with the propane tank farm and some eminent domain, which they've actually have a lot more experience than we do. I think there are a lot of areas outside of annexation that Boulder County could be and advise and help us with, outside of annexation. I think those ought to be pursued, and I think we're pursuing them right now, and kudos to you guys for pursuing one with the Boulder County Sheriff's Organization. I think it's a great example of things we can accomplish with them. They actually are widely accepted as needs in this community. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Any other comments from folks in the room about IGA?
Don Baumhofer, Netherland resident. So to the gentleman's point, yes, there are departments in the county that are great to work with, and there, we can accomplish a lot working together with them, and we have accomplished a lot working together with them, and look forward to doing so in the future. I don't believe land use is one of those departments. They have historically been, they have exceptionally, what's the word, restrictive policies throughout the county, exceptionally restrictive, way above and beyond what the state codes are. And over the past 20 years of the expired IGA, that policy has prevented informed and well-thought-out development in the county, because we were in this IGA with them. I am a victim of that, and I am being priced out of Netherland. And I apologize, so I'm going to get emotional. But if an annexation had been allowed 10 years ago, or even considered on any level, that several things happened, that, you know, some things you can't do, do without. I was in a rent-to-own situation that has, that had to be changed due to that property being a family trust, and so it couldn't be sold. And in that time, the price went out of my, out of my range. So when you guys discuss policy, you need to think about people, not just properties, and you need to think. Apologies. Give me a minute. It feels like you're saying you're not wanted or needed here. That's what I hear when I hear people rally so vehemently against annexation in general. It is not all bad, and not all people who are in favor of it are people who want unchecked growth. I don't believe anyone on any side of the table or around are in favor of unchecked growth around here. We're in favor of informed and reasonable projects done by reasonable people with solid plans. And so I'm not in favor of an IGA being considered. I believe this board and this town has, have grown up, and you've done your research and your homework, and you're working hard to make your own policies. And I don't believe you need Big Brother County in order to inform your own growth in the future. And I really appreciate all the work you guys are doing on this. So thank you.
Thanks, Don. Appreciate it. Anyone else in, in the room would like to give a comment on what you'd like to see with the IGA?
Are we talking IGA or annexation now?
IGA, so whether you wanted it, if so, what?
I, those of you who, Kayla Evans, 1250 Eldora Road. I don't know if any of you watch Rachel Maddow or not, but on her show the other night, she was talking about how a lot of things that are happening now have happened in the past, and the world didn't blow up. I don't think the world, and I don't think Netherland is going to blow up if we don't re-sign the IGA with Boulder County right now. If you decide that you want to do that, please take enough time to find out whether this is beneficial to the town or not beneficial to the town. And those are really the two criteria that I think you need to look at. We have been the victim of our IGA, I think, for a long time in certain areas. Boulder County can be very domineering, and the only reason they're not, I, I don't agree with the idea that they're not, they're so busy that they can't work on an IGA with us, and that ours had to expire, but then they wanted an extension. Look at all of the other municipalities in Boulder County and see who's benefited from having one, who's not benefited, what has been detrimental to them. What has been detrimental to them and what has helped them? And make those, uh, pronouncements very weightedly because you're right. A lot of people have talked about, well, what you do will have an effect on people that are on the next board or the next board or the next board. And that's true. You are suffering from decisions that were or weren't made twenty years ago. And how much do you want to clean up and how much do you want to influence? How much do you feel that you're the victim of other boards? Just like the people in this community are victims from bad choices that were made or good choices that were made by these boards. So, um, it's a heck of a lot of a responsibility. I want to thank you, but the world is not going to blow up if we don't re-sign up with Boulder County right now. Be deliberative. Take your time. Do it right if you do it at all. Thank you.
Thanks, Kayla. Who else in the room is? Roger?
Roger Cornell, North Peak to Peak Highway. Um, really not gonna speak pro or con. I just want to bring a little, hopefully, I'm bringing a true story and enlightening the situation. One of the biggest controversies that we have right now that we don't understand is what happened with the IGA and why we haven't proceeded. It's as simple as, I will call it the Three Mile Plan because they call it something else. But in that IGA, back in 2002, the town made this agreement. You could talk to Rich Tullison. There's also Mayor Pro Tem who was at the time. I'm not certain that there was more than one or two people in entire Nederland that understood that there would be a quote-unquote "Three Mile Plan" would be part of the IGA. So, they decided that there would be no other properties part of the IGA up for annexation. This is absolutely true and the way it went, I might not be saying it right, but it is a fact. And in fact, when then, whenever it was, 2010, we actually had a Gersio, Jim Gersio did an application for a property north of town, the minus property. The planning commission, the town went through all the hoops to see whether we should take it or not to take it. The planning commission voted against it. They said, well, the IGA says we need to take it to the Boulder County to, uh, to see what, what they feel about it. And it was very mixed bag in the town, but we go to the planning, through the Boulder County Planning Commission, they looked at it. It, the hearing took less than five minutes. They said, oh, it's not in the IGA. We don't see it in the Three Mile Plan. Bye. And it was tabled, gone. And we did this twice with, uh, Bobcat Ridge. We went through the entire process. Everybody in the town worked to have this process approved, not approved. We did all these things. Goes to the Boulder County and the fact is, well, it was never in the part of the 2002 IGA. You didn't talk about the specific property. We don't want to talk about it either. And they sent us on home. So, I'm sitting here, I would say that you can do an IGA or we can just do our own. Uh, we have our annexation agreement. We can do all our, uh, annexation process, but we have to do a Three Mile Plan. We have to do that one way or the other. And the plan can say, no annexation, no, no properties up for it and we're supposed to do it every year. Needs to be reviewed at least once a year. So we have to do all those things by code. But, so whether we do it on our own and then set up, hey, here's the properties we feel there's really only about three properties around the suburbs that actually makes sense to be annexed. It's very, it's very small. We're not gonna annex Caribou Road like we do. We're not gonna annex Ridge Road. We're not gonna annex, uh, whatever the one is down by the, by the mine, by the dam. So, it is very small properties to look at and decide as a town. So we could do it as a town, but if we wanted the other help to get input from the county, you could do an IGA. But if you don't decide which properties, I know, but I'm telling you some good stuff. If you don't decide as a town where you want to, to grow or not to grow, then you'll be having this fight next year, the year after, the year after. It's only because whatever reason, there's nobody in this town other than two, three people know why they didn't actually do that. I certainly didn't know it. I went to town all worried about annexation down to the hearing and he told me, oh my goodness, you know, I learned a lot that night. So that's, you know, just keep working on it and there's Rich Tullison. There's some people here that were there when this was conceived. Uh, please get together and talk to them. Um, and I'm certainly, my name is on every comp plan that this town has ever done, so I've been there too. So, thanks.
Thanks, Roger. Appreciate it. Go ahead. Come on, May.
May Gerald, Town of Nederland. Thank you, Mayor Kippen, for calling this town hall and trustees for being here. Dr. Fisher.
Yeah.
I want to thank Roger. I've been listening to Roger for thirty years at town meetings and he is an incredible resource to this town. Say it again?
It's more than thirty.
Yeah, I, well, we don't talk about him anymore. More than thirty. Um, to Jonathan's point about, don't bite off more than you can chew, I absolutely agree. To Dawn's point, and I feel for her. I used to feel that way when I got my water bill. Now I'm getting help with my water bill. But even if you don't get to live where you want to right away, such as out of town in the Bobcat Ridge development, Ron Mitchell's been trying to get his projects through that are gonna add like eighty units of affordable and workforce housing. My own feeling is, one of the reasons you want to negotiate the IGA, as James pointed out, is the county knows how to do stuff that we don't, like run a police department. Run a planning department. They have engineering skills. Tell them we want to put a bridge in or we don't. We want to move forward with Ron's development. We got a lot of infrastructure challenges. Get their help. In return, both the town and the county can rest a little bit easier that every other day, there might not be a new application from somebody that thinks, hey, I'm gonna buy a property. I'm gonna annex it. I'm gonna do this, that, and the other thing. So, um, gee, there was something else I was gonna say. But, yeah, um, I would just encourage you to move forward in a good way. And, oh, the other thing I was gonna say is the Bobcat Ridge development was not unilaterally denied through the IGA by the county. It was a question of numbers, I believe, Kayla, wasn't it?
Listen, I wanted to mention that your story with this town administrator.
We're running out of time, May, so, so.
Well, I think the housing needs study said no more than forty up there. They asked for seventy. I don't think we have time to get into it, but I just want to make it clear that there was a numbers question and also that the housing that Dawn might live in will not be affordable in thirty years up there when Jonathan might need it, because it's only for thirty years. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, May. Anyone else in the room have any comments on, uh, what you'd like to, whether or not you want an IGA and if so, what you'd want to see in it? If not, we'll turn to folks online.
Susan.
Go ahead, Susan.
Is that my name? Okay. Um, so yes, I would like to, and again, I live, uh, outside the town. I live on the border with the town. Um, but again, the county, together with the town during negotiations, decided that this land in Wildlife Quarter was the primary area to direct development. That's what I disagree with. Where do we develop? It should be in the center of town. Density, you put density where density is. But, um, but in terms of, so the IGA, to me, one of the big issues is the resources that the county has. And I think about planning, uh, during the twenty, envision 2030 when Ron Mitchell's, um, development came up in a charrette on municipal, no, I think it was on economic development. It was discussed a bit and he mentioned the fact that he bought land explicitly so a bridge could be built across there. And we discussed, um, why it hadn't succeeded. And one of the things the town administrator Karen Garrity said at the time was the town does not have the capacity to plan. Uh, Ron mentioned that if he did put the bridge in there, then he would need to orient his, uh, workforce housing in different directions on Snyder Street and he needed to do it altogether. And Karen said, we can't do that. And I just noticed that the vice chair of the planning commission, Jim Reese, submitted a similar comment at a board of trustees meeting discussing Ron Mitchell. And he also said, we, we don't have a planning department. We can't do it. So that's, I would love to see the town recognize that we need more resources. This is kind of ironic to me that we say we, we want to make these decisions ourselves. We don't have the resources to do it and we know it. All of you who are trustees know how strapped far, how much you have to do. It's an eternal battle just to get things done. So why aren't we looking to the county? And I would love to see, I don't know what they could offer us in terms of planning hours under town supervision, if that's even an option. But if we're ever gonna get the central business district redeveloped, we, we've got to get through the problem that we don't have the capacity even to plan it. And the funding is another thing. Um, and in terms of the numbers, so I would like to hear at some point, not tonight, but this issue, the county wasn't interested, uh, in, in, in negotiating. The last document I read in the file from the town to the county was we want no restrictions on Bobcat Ridge. And, and this is, this whole issue, we've heard it and I understand people have dreams. If, but if that is in fact what has motivated the town both to renegotiate the IGA and this annexation ordinance, then that has to be discussed in terms of what are the benefits? What are the benefits? Uh, Boulder City just had a big problem, 311 Mapleton, you can Google it, where they were gonna finance affordable housing by building market rate. Well, they built all these nine thousand dollar a month apartments in Mapleton, Westham, Mapleton. And now the developers say, well, we can't build any affordable housing. So, you know, those are things that have to be pinned down rather than continuing to say this is the answer to our affordable housing, you know. So anyway, that's, and, and I look forward to the housing. That's the next meeting and we can discuss issues around that. But I think facts, 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 including sewer and infrastructure. We need more facts and transparency. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
I, I've questioned Miranda. Could, in an IGA, you request services of the planning departments of Boulder County to assist the town in developments? Is that something that people do?
You can make the ask, yeah. Uh, Eric.
Go ahead, Eric.
Well, thanks. Yep, Eric, Nederland resident. Um, I would say that, um, I think it'd be helpful to just get an understanding, like I said before, about why the first IGA existed and why that was put together, because I think a lot of the same issues that they were going through are probably just as relevant today. And whether the IGA exists or not, I think we should be thinking about, um, you know, some, some either structure or policy or something to keep directing us back to the comp plan. So if it's not this board of trustees, you know, imagine yourself doing your term and a couple of years down the road, you're not on the board of trustees, but if, if, you know, the board of trustees is weighing on a decision in which they hold an immense amount of power that you wish there was some sort of check and balance for, you know, you could negatively impact you. And I think, you know, best forms of government have multiple forms of decision-making bodies such that there is checks and balances. And whether it comes in the form of the IGA or just a very thoughtful comp plan and all policy directs decision-making back to that, I think that's a good, good way to go to. Uh, it's heartbreaking hearing the, the woman, I forgot her name, about being priced out of, uh, Nederland. Um, I, I, I want to make clear, like, I'm not anti-growth. I'm just very for thoughtful growth. Humans are pretty destructive creatures. We keep gobbling up different open spaces of the planet. We keep pushing wildlife further and further away. We push species towards extinction, like it's happening all around us. It's time we start being really thoughtful about growth. Not no growth, just how can we be as thoughtful as possible? And if the IGA can help in that way, perfect. If there are other means to do it, perfect. Easy things, you know, top of mind or, you know, emphasis on infill. Someone mentioned Ron Mitchell's plans. He's had plans in the library for six years to develop o, over eighty units. Um, I feel like we should be looking at that in earnest. Um, perhaps looking at height restrictions in earnest. Being as thoughtful as we can means not gobbling up nature, not continuing to gobble up nature. Because we can grow thoughtfully and provide housing for people without doing that. So, I know the kind of direct, you know, went a little different direction in the IGA, but if the IGA can help us keep us on track towards those goals on for all four, trying to negotiate something for that. And also just being thoughtful with the IGA about what the town needs, about where it's short on resources and seeing what the county would ask in return for providing what the town would need from the county in the county's expertise.
Thanks, Eric.
Teagan.
Teagan.
Hey there, Teagan Lakey, Manulay area again. Um, I just wanted to share, um, a conversation I had with now a former Gilpin County Commissioner. And she was talking even as county commissioner in Gilpin about how few resources they have as a small county. You know, not unlike Nederland as a municipality, you know, they're, you know, categorized differently. And, um, she was speaking to how much easier the Boulder County Commissioners' jobs are, given that they have the staff who are paid for their expertise to look up answers, to provide facts, to provide information. And the difference was that there was so much more weight on her shoulders in Gilpin County because they did not have that staff and that expertise. And so it fell on the Commissioners. I see that a lot, um, you know, in Nederland, a lot falling on the shoulders of the BOT and the town staff. Um, because Nederland doesn't have the multimillion dollar budget that Boulder County has. Um, so I would support finding a way to leverage the resources from Boulder County to use some of that staff time and that expertise that could take a, a weight off of the shoulders of the BOT in particular, you know, and, and give you guys back a little bit more of your life. If you can rely on, um, other staff to provide you information in order to make informed decisions. Um, and there was one comment, um, I meant to make, um, on the IGA, or sorry, on the annexation regulations. And I just wanted to add it in here, um, that I support what Susan was saying, um, about planning commission and doesn't come to a decision within their meeting and as following seven days, it should be noted that they did not come to a decision rather than that it's announced. Um, thank you very much.
Thanks, Teagan. Appreciate it. Anyone else online have any comments? With the IGA? If not, um, and if there's no more comments in here, um, any closing comments from, this is scheduled to go till eight and then we have a busy evening after that. Any closing comments from the trustees?
I've got one. Um, uh, in the DOLA thing that we referred to, um, there's, uh, there's a Gunnison agreement under the Three Mile Plan. One of the things that they put in there is ways of working together, including dispute adjudication. What happens if you hit deadlock with the county? How do you resolve it? We probably should put our way of working into the plan. Because this is gonna be a ten-year, if we do this, it'll be a long-term document. Other boards gotta live with.
So Gunnison, this is an example of Gunnison's IGA?
Yeah, there's a, in the DOLA site, there's, um, you know, Gunnison, I, I was looking through the Gunnison thing, which is an example. And it's short, it's sweet, it's right to the point. I don't think it's more than ten pages. But they have, the, the, I think disputed adjudication, one- what happens when you hit loggerheads is real important, so you don't get stuck.
Thanks, Tom. Other comments? Closing.
We also haven't heard from
We haven't heard. Thank you. I was just thinking the same thing, John Mountain and Jesse Severs. What are your thoughts?
Hey, Billy. Thank you, guys, for including us, us, long-forgotten, remote folks. There were some very compelling statements made on all sides. And I want you guys to know that sometimes, though, all of us may not answer, or some of us may not answer, we do take your comments and consider considerations very seriously through via email or in this forum as well. So, yeah, I think one of the reasons why I decided to take this role on was I've been a part of a town in the past where I felt that responsible people were, were in charge, and they were, they were doing the right things. And I trusted in them and, and believed in them for the most part. And when we would go to town halls like this in that town, the same sorts of things were being discussed. However, the frustration that I had was that, in some cases, the board did not make decisions. And that's not why a person should be sitting where we're sitting. I do feel very strongly that we are a democratic representation of this entire town. That doesn't mean that we don't take your considerations. The town's considerations are considerable. They hold a lot of weight, and we consider those very seriously. But we're here to do a job, and I feel pretty strongly that if we have something on the table that we need to make a decision on, we should try our best to be a representation of the town that we care about and love so much, and make those decisions, and not rely so much on either the town itself, which, you know, is filled with hardworking and people with, you know, who are starved for time. And, and also, you know, we should rely on consultants, people who are experts. But I think with the power of all of that, you know, the statements from the town, all of the ideas that we can share with experts in ourself, in between ourselves, as a represent, representative culture and component of the town, I feel very strongly that we have work to do, and we should do it. We should not either get deadlocked on issues, or we should not push it off to a larger county organization to make decisions for us, when in some cases, they may not even have our best interest in mind. So, you know, I would, I definitely would take a lot of the, I've written a lot of notes tonight, and I'm, I'm going to go back through, and I'm going to read them again. But my aim in taking this role is to really do work, not to sit on the sidelines and say, oh, this is too big of a decision for us to make, unless it really is. And it very well could be. But in as many cases as possible, I would like to say that, you know, I'm all in on doing my job here. So there's, there's a lot to discuss and a lot to consider with both, both of the discussion points tonight. So, thank you, Billy. I appreciate you letting me chime in.
Now, forward to hearing more of your voice over the next few hours. Thanks, Jesse.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. I just wanted to say thanks to everybody in the room who participated as well as online. And, yeah, I just really appreciate all the, all the thoughtful comments and the general spirit of collaboration around democracy. I think the thing I heard tonight that I was moved by as much or more than anything is really appreciated Teagan's comments, and also just kind of just hearing a general theme of wanting to ensure that we have a strong and healthy democracy. And I feel like that's a really big opportunity for us to think about that. And I feel inspired to discuss that in more detail with the BOT. We're working on planning an upcoming retreat, and I've, I've had some ideas that I've discussed with some of my colleagues on the BOT for how we might look into, you know, deepening our democracy. I really see democracy as something that's an active practice, as opposed to something that's, you know, one and done. You know, Roger Cornell, I think you're a great example, having participated in as much as you have for 30 years plus. And, you know, I commend everyone for showing up tonight and, and weighing in. And, you know, we are listening. Every email that we get, I read. I believe the rest of the BOT members read. I try to respond to most and take them all into consideration. And I think that we really owe it to ourselves and, you know, to our forebears and to the rest of the world to continue to think about how we're practicing democracy and ways in which we can continue to improve it over the years. And, you know, it's, it's what makes us a nation. And I think that it's really important for us to keep that front and center. And that's really kind of what, what I'm left with here. And I've heard that expressed tonight by the people showing up as, as something that we're wanting to make sure that we're keeping that, you know, at the forefront of our minds is to represent and express the will of the people.
Thanks, Jesse. Appreciate it. If there's nothing else, I want to thank everyone for being here. Oh, go ahead. There is something else. Go ahead.
So one of the things that has been hotly debated is the question of the triggered vote. And one of the things that I've been watching and considering is whether or not I would consider that more. And the reason why, at least initially, I thought, I think it was a really great thing that we did in that we all came together as a compromise. And it's, you know, still need to get 30, 30 signatures for, to bring it as a referendum, and, you know, folks can put it on the ballot to vote. But here's something that I've been noticing over the last several months. When there's a contentious issue that happens, social media, right here in this room, people are absolutely jerks to each other. I have been so dismayed at some of the comments I will see of people just raking each other's names in social media. In this own room, people laughing at each other, or laughing at someone making comments, just being humiliating. If this was a room of children, that behavior would be considered bullying and would not be allowed. And I think that what if 30 people came before and put their name on a list? And how would they be treated in that situation? My fear is that their names might get smeared on social media. And I don't like that. And so, if I were to think if there was one point of, you know, like Eric, you were talking about, is the things that could be negotiated on, from a vote or whatnot. As much as I think getting 30 signatures is, you know, no big deal in my world, like, I would go and get that, you know, I really do feel like that's still part of the democratic process. The behavior that I've seen over the last several months of, you know, really paying attention to all this, the smearing, makes me suggest that otherwise, that perhaps going to a triggered vote wouldn't be such a bad idea. As Corvall, Tanya, you know, trustee Corvallon always says, it's a good idea, it's going to pass. And so, that's just something I want to put out there. And I want folks to kind of think about how we treat each other on social media, how we treat each other in this room. And it's maybe just kind of some further discussion amongst us as BOT members, but just something I want to throw out there.
I would like to second that, so that maybe we could get this back on an agenda in the future.
Thanks. I appreciate that perspective. And thanks, Tanya. Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight, and all your attention and all your comments. And thank you all for Monday, Nicole, James, and all of y'all who attended Monday, Eric, and everyone else I'm missing. Appreciate the interest and the involvement in this subject. So, and we'll look forward to more. Have a good night, or we'll see. We're staying here for the open meeting, for those of you who are here for the open meeting.
Billy, can we do a quick break, so we can move some things around?
We are going to take a quick break, please.
How long, so people know?
We're going to take, how much?
It's eight o'clock.
You need?
Five minutes?
Five minutes? Five minutes, we'll come back at eight oh six. Um. Sorry. Um. Actually. Macy and Miranda, you? Are we ready to go on the? Recording side, are we just staying, is it just? It stayed the same? I know it looked different online, but it's just. Okay, cool. Um, so I would love to call to order. The March twenty first, twenty twenty three. Open meeting. The Board of Trustees at eight thirteen PM. Um. And if we could, Macy, a roll call?
Mayor Billy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Mahol?
Here.
Trustee Corvalon?
Here.
Trustee Kumsizma?
Here.
Trustee Mountain?
Here.
Trustee Severs?
Here.
And Trustee Sterling?
Here.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, everyone, so it was excellent couple hours to get us started, but we got a lot to do here in these next couple, hopefully. Um, so first we have the consent agenda, there are five items on the consent agenda. Um, and. Are there any clarifying questions? I have, I just have two observations, they're minor, but I think I. Actually, I forgot to ask Miranda about the second one, but the aim, um, for what it's worth. For four point five is listed as an action item because that was originally what we're gonna do, but we moved it to consent, it's actually consent item, so that's why it's here. Um, uh, four point five. If you, if you actually look at the aim itself, we, uh. Did not correct. Yeah, we did not correct the, um. Little checkbox at the top, and then also the only other observation I noticed is the Big Springs Egress, um. Uh, aim, it texts about that in May twenty twenty two, the BOT voted to use these funds to study additional expense egress routes, I think it was June first. Right, so anyways, those are the only things I noticed. Other than that, I have no clarifying questions on the consent agenda. Anyone else?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Macy, Macy?
Mayor Protem Mahol?
Yes.
Trustee Kumsizma?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, um. All right, I just scooted away from my title page. All right, so from this, we'll go into public comment on non-agenda items. We have one that was submitted and is in the packet. Anyone else have a public comment on a non-agenda item? James?
James Rostorn, uh, Netherlands resident, Big Springs. Uh, you get all my comments in one night, because Noah didn't send me to see you this week, so. Kind of compressed all into one. I just want to comment on the, uh, I, I really appreciate, uh, your comments on Facebook, uh, Mayor, around the Boulder County Sheriff's Office proposal. And it was a really good outline, and it was actually very informative. I just wanted to comment that, uh, I voted for the, uh, the tax initiative, um, because I was encouraged to by my neighbors, um, friends. Because it would have paid for the Netherlands Police Department, while I felt like the BCSO was probably the more efficient mechanism. I wanted to be supportive of their desire to have a Netherlands Police Department, because we traditionally have for quite a long time. And I was disappointed in the use of the funds, uh, being dedicated to a. I hope I described this right, a public engagement manager, um, when I think there are more pressing needs in town for the sixty thousand dollars that are being spent. I was reminded actually on the drive in here that, you know, the roads are not in great condition, even the entranceway, the community circle used some work. I would encourage, uh, the board to use that sixty thousand dollars in a more effective, efficient way. If at all possible, then I think this town's a bit small for that position. And I would, uh, prefer the money being spent, I guess, I prefer it being spent on. A police department, because I think that was the intent of the tax initiative overall, I do understand the language at the end. That it can, it can be used for any purposes, y'all see fit, but as a resident, I don't think that's the best use of it. Thank you very much, I appreciate all the work you all are doing, I know it's a thankless task and occupies a lot of time. Most appreciated, thank you.
James, come join us.
If that's an invitation, actually, next election, I'll, I'll, I'll try to find the time, too, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, James, appreciate it.
If it's okay, Miranda, would you be willing to clarify the sixty thousand? Because I, because I think that that's an important piece to clarify, it's not an actual sixty thousand dollar price tag, and Miranda, if you can clarify.
Correct, and, and just, uh, so just to kind of take it back. We didn't ask you for funding for a public engagement officer, we asked you to fund an administrative assistant. The administrative assistant range is sixteen to eighteen dollars an hour, it's approximately forty thousand dollars a year. There are fringe benefits that have to be considered there, we budget at the high end of fringe benefits, and so that's your, of course, your health insurance. And other, um, potential in, uh, investments into the four fifty seven K, and it was also for a laptop. So the salary itself for this front desk administrative assistant is closer to thirty, it's, I think it's thirty five to forty thousand dollars annually.
And so can you clarify where the confusion is, where people are getting the sixty thousand dollar price tag?
Well, so, because we included fringe benefits, so when we put it in your aim, we said fifty nine thousand, because it was the salary, the fringe benefits, and the two thousand dollars for a laptop.
And I'm sorry, because I was absent at that meeting. We haven't had that position in the past, um, where do you see those resources being used and saved, like, how is this gonna, I mean. Obviously, more people working, it makes everyone's job easier, but you were finding you needed another assistant, or?
So Peter has been transitioned to a public engagement manager position, currently leaving the town hall with no administrative assistant. And that front desk is now being covered by everyone.
What does he do as a public engagement?
So his focus is on community outreach, engagement, and education as it relates to projects. And helping to ensure that we are keeping the public up to date, whether it's residents or visitors, on everything that's happening in town. A lot of some of the challenges we see is that the rumor mill, it really gets ahead of itself, and we don't have enough time as department heads to be chasing all of the misinformation. So it is in towns benefit, in my opinion, and outlined in the reimagined destinations project goals. That we need a dedicated position like this to help to better inform the community of everything that is happening, and to ensure there's better two-way communication between town staff. And town government and the community as a whole, and this is really the conduit to make that happen.
And he's been doing this full-time for how long?
Administrative assistant, doing, was promoted to administrative support manager when he took over the visitor center. But he has been doing this work with, while also trying to run the front desk, and I can tell you, I cover the front desk at least once a week for him. It's impossible to do a job and cover the front desk.
No, that's true.
You have to free that person up, so we're looking for a really entry-level staff member to start as an administrative assistant to do just that. A lot of the, the clerical work, the answering the questions of people who come in, answering phone calls, eco passes, accepting utility payments. Peter has a skill set that is, is, needs to be utilized in a better manner, and we feel that the public engagement manager position gives him that ability to do just that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Um, hearing none, we'll go ahead and, um. Move into our first action item of the night. Uh, we have four of them, first one is six point one, intergovernmental agreement for law enforcement. And.
Attorney Madsen. To you to introduce.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, members of the Board of Trustees, Jennifer Madsen, Town Attorney. And before you tonight is an action item on the intergovernmental agreement with the Boulder County Sheriff's Office. Um, an intergovernmental agreement is a contract. The contract is with Boulder County and Boulder County Sheriff's Office to provide law enforcement services. Um, I'm not going to go into much detail on the contract unless you have questions and you'd like me to go into that detail. Um. But really, this is a contract for law enforcement services at the staffing level option C. Um, the contract isn't quite yet finalized, Division, Division Chief Chamberlain has been out of town while we've been working on this. Um, agreement, and we need his, uh, input to finalize the contract. So the resolution before you tonight would allow the mayor to execute the contract once it is finalized. So that's my introduction, and I'm available for any questions on, uh, the contract or anything else that you might have related to these law enforcement services.
Any clarifying questions for Jennifer? Um, hearing none, we can move to public comment. Any, any public comment in the room, first of all, on, um. The action item of an IGA with Boulder County Sheriff's Office about law enforcement services? Any comments online? Some, um, Tanya just raised her hand. Go ahead, you can, um, speak up, uh. Give you a minute and. Star six, maybe if you're talking and we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear, we can hear you now.
Okay, great, uh, more of a question than a comment? Have, is it all settled that we're going with the level C police?
Oh, well, I'm hoping to make an amendment for B, but.
Well, Tanya, will you just state your name for the record?
Oh, sorry, Tanya Unger.
Oh.
Thanks for the question, Tanya, I think the answer is, it remains to be seen. Um, Tanya Corvalon said she's planning to make an amendment. And the other public comments were folks online? Okay, hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board, uh, for discussion.
Well, as I just said, I was hoping to approve this with the amendment to go for option B, um, just one last effort at that, as you know, that was my preference, um. At the last meeting, two meetings ago. And I don't know if we need to have a discussion about that, or if we're just gonna approve it with an amendment, and if it doesn't win, then you guys put the other one up there, I don't know, the process.
Well, Jennifer, can you, can you let us know what, what, what the options are?
Yeah, I had sent trustee, trustee Sterling some draft language related to, um, my suggestions for this process. You know, there's, there's really two ways that it could be done, one is a motion to repeal the decision to go with staffing level option C. With Boulder County Sheriff's Office, um, then there would be a vote on that. And then the next step would be, if it was approved, that you repealed that decision, then somebody else would need, need to make a motion as to, um. Whatever staffing level option you want, A or B, and then there would be a motion on that, and then lastly, there would be a motion to approve the resolution. Um, for contracting based on whatever option you approve, the reason for that three-step process is just for. Uh, make sure that everybody understands what each of you are voting on, and for clarity and, and transparency with the public. Um, and, but an easier approach. Maybe not as clear would just be a motion to approve the resolution with an amendment to change the staffing level option from option, option C. To whatever that, that staffing level option is that the person making the motion wants to go with.
Thanks for clarifying. Those options.
So would it be appropriate to kind of just? We know how trustee Corvalon, you know, is citing, how are the rest of folks feeling? Regarding a potential amendment to option B?
Yeah, just, you want to take a poll and just hear from people, folks, what we're thinking?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I can, I mean, I can start and just say, I had hoped, I was asked, I said a couple weeks ago to, you know, make a statement about why I thought option C was the way to go toward. And it turns out Tom was asked to, and then sent to the wrong email address, and then I was hoping that our statements would go out in the paper last, that Thursday, two Thursdays ago, and then last Thursday, so people could read it, and unfortunately. Um, decision was made to hold off, and, and so I, I did post my statement today online, and, um, I have no idea how people have responded to it. I warned everyone I wouldn't look at Facebook, and, uh, they're welcome to email BOT or me.
Do you want to give me, do you want to give me a synopsis?
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, yeah, thanks, I would love to, actually, so here's just my logic, and the more I thought about it, I, I, I gave some on the twenty first, I probably should, you know. Or on the seventh, when we met, or no, wait, this was a special meeting, on the twenty eighth, I gave some, um, of my logic. But I've kind of thought more about it, rounded it out, and, you know, it, um. Uh, I would just, you know, initially, I wanted to go the MPD rebuild, I was probably the last one to go, I would, I would like to recognize. Me being the last holdout, you know, as much as we're split on coverage, we are unanimous on moving, making this move to the sheriff. So, and that way, I feel like it's, it's a good sign that we're being united, we're just trying to decide on the contract details. So my logic is that Superior and Lyons are two other municipalities that go with Boulder County. Superior has thirteen thousand people, and they spend about two million, so they have eight and a half times the amount of people, and three times, and they spend three times as much. Um, Lyons has two thousand people, so approximately one point three times more people than us, and they have less coverage, they spend less for less coverage. So to me, we would still be spending more per person on law, with option C for law enforcement than either of those two other municipalities that's, um. That contract with them, Agilities, they totally have different ways of looking at this, Lyons or Superior has incrementally increased, they were at, in two thousand and fifteen, they were just under one and a half million. They have increased, there's been some increase in costs, but they've also chosen to increase coverage, and they've been able to do that kind of systematically as they're ready to, as they have the funds and have the need, they have systematically moved forward and increased their.
He has been doing this work with, while also trying to run the front desk. And I can tell you, I cover the front desk at least once a week for him. It's impossible to do a job and cover the front desk.
No, that's true.
You have to free that person up. So we're looking for a really entry level staff member to start as an administrative assistant to do just that. A lot of the clerical work, the answering the questions of people who come in, answering phone calls, eco passes, accepting utility payments. Peter has a skill set that is, needs to be utilized in a better manner. And we feel that the public engagement manager position gives him that ability to do just that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move into our first action item of the night. We have four of them. First one is 6.1, intergovernmental agreement for law enforcement.
Attorney Madsen, it's to you to introduce.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board of Trustees, Jennifer Madsen, Town Attorney. And before you tonight is an action item on the intergovernmental agreement with the Boulder County Sheriff's Office. An intergovernmental agreement is a contract. The contract is with Boulder County and Boulder County Sheriff's Office to provide law enforcement services. I'm not going to go into much detail on the contract unless you have questions and you'd like me to go into that detail. But really, this is a contract for law enforcement services at the staffing level option C. The contract isn't quite yet finalized. Division Chief Chamberlain has been out of town while we've been working on this agreement. And we need his input to finalize the contract. So the resolution before you tonight would allow the mayor to execute the contract once it is finalized. So that's my introduction, and I'm available for any questions on the contract or anything else that you might have related to these law enforcement services.
Any clarifying questions for Jennifer? Hearing none, we can move to public comment. Any public comment in the room, first of all, on the action item of an IGA with Boulder County Sheriff's Office about law enforcement services? Any comments online? Some, Tanya just raised her hand. Go ahead, you can speak up, give you a minute and star six, maybe if you're talking and we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. More of a question than a comment. Have, is it all settled that we're going with the level C police?
Oh, well, I'm hoping to make an amendment for B, but.
Well, Tanya, will you just state your name for the record?
Oh, sorry, Tanya Unger.
Thanks for the question, Tanya. I think the answer is, it remains to be seen. Tanya Corvallin said she's planning to make an amendment. Any other public comments for folks online? Okay, hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion.
Well, as I just said, I was hoping to approve this with the amendment to go for option B. Just one last effort at that. As you know, that was my preference at the last meeting, two meetings ago. And I don't know if we need to have a discussion about that, or if we're just gonna approve it with an amendment, and if it doesn't win, then you guys put the other one up there. I don't know, the process.
Well, Jennifer, can you, can you let us know what, what the options are?
Yeah, I had sent trustee Sterling some draft language related to my suggestions for this process. You know, there's, there's really two ways that it could be done. One is a motion to repeal the decision to go with staffing level option C with Boulder County Sheriff's Office. Then there would be a vote on that. And then the next step would be, if it was approved, that you repealed that decision, then somebody else would need to make a motion as to whatever staffing level option you want, A or B. And then there would be a motion on that. And then lastly, there would be a motion to approve the resolution for contracting based on whatever option you approved. The reason for that three-step process is just for make sure that everybody understands what each of you are voting on and for clarity and transparency with the public. And, but an easier approach, maybe not as clear, would just be a motion to approve the resolution with an amendment to change the staffing level option from option C to whatever that staffing level option is that the person making the motion wants to go with.
Thanks for clarifying those options.
So would it be appropriate to kind of just, we know how trustee Corvallon, you know, is citing, how are the rest of folks feeling regarding a potential amendment to option B?
Yeah, just, you want to take a poll and just hear from people, folks, what we're thinking? Yeah, okay. I can, I mean, I can start and just say, I had hoped, I was asked, I said a couple weeks ago to, you know, make a statement about why I thought option C was the way to go toward, and it turns out Tom was asked to, and then sent to the wrong email address. And then I was hoping that our statements would go out in the paper last, that Thursday, two Thursdays ago, and then last Thursday, so people could read it. And unfortunately, decision was made to hold off. And so I did post my statement today online, and I have no idea how people have responded to it. I warned everyone I wouldn't look at Facebook, and they're welcome to email VOT or me.
Do you want to give me, do you want to give me a synopsis?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, thanks, I would love to, actually. So here's just my logic, and the more I thought about it, I gave some on the 21st, I probably should, you know, or on the 7th when we met, or no, wait, this was a special meeting, on the 28th, I gave some of my logic. But I've kind of thought more about it, rounded it out, and you know, I would just, you know, initially, I wanted to go the MPD rebuild, I was probably the last one to go. I would like to recognize me being the last holdout, you know, as much as we're split on coverage, we are unanimous on moving, making this move to the sheriff. So, and that way, I feel like it's a good sign that we're being united, we're just trying to decide on the contract details. So my logic is that Superior and Lyons are two other municipalities that go with Boulder County. Superior has 13,000 people, and they spend about 2 million, so they have eight and a half times the amount of people, and three times, and they spend three times as much. Lyons has 2,000 people, so approximately 1.3 times more people than us, and they have less coverage, they spend less for less coverage. So to me, we would still be spending more per person on, with option C for law enforcement than either of those two other municipalities that, that contract with them. Agilities, they totally have different ways of looking at this. Lyons, or Superior, has incrementally increased. They were at, in 2015, they were just under 1.5 million. They have increased, there's been some increase in costs, but they've also chosen to increase coverage, and they've been able to do that kind of systematically as they're ready to, as they have the funds and have the need. They have systematically moved forward and increased their coverage and their spending. Lyons, at the same, on the other hand, has held still, they kind of like not having a big police presence. They, when I told Holly what our option C, option, you know, was gonna be, and that was what we were leaning towards, the option C, she's like, why would you want so much police coverage? So it's a very different, you know, kind of thinking about it in Lyons. But they, so they have stayed the same. So we have that ability to do either thing, you know, we could, to do, to do either. It's, we're not stuck in a decision once you make it. It's agile, we can be agile, we can add more, or we could stay the same. And then, as for, you know, it does take time if we decide to ramp up later, we've learned there is, you know, we have to sit down with the BCSO, we have to rework the agreement, so that takes some time, then it comes to us, we have to approve it, and then it goes to the Boulder County Commissioners, and they have to prove it, so there's some time there. And then they have to hire the person, which could take a while. But there is no financial penalty, where if we went with B and just with our new sergeant, you know, and having that sergeant come and talk with us, and we decided, you know, maybe we don't quite need this much coverage because we do have other sheriffs in town, and that, we would have to pay six months at the higher rate, we'd kind of be penalized to ramp it back down. So to me, it's slowly ramping up seems like the, just safer way to go. As for the, the sergeant is in acting law enforcement, he responds to calls, he or she, and writes tickets, their sergeant is boots on the ground, will be part of the daily coverage, 50% of tax uncommitted time, so it's not 50% of the time in a 12-hour shift. If you were busy and committed to calls for six hours, it's the other six that would split 50/50, so it would be, say, nine hours and three hours out of county. At the same time, we do have other sheriffs that are in and out of town, working the peak-to-peak region, and the sergeant is also, you know, on duty and in town. As for the tax increase to pay for law enforcement, we all voted, or I voted for it, all, the majority of our citizens, voters, residents voted for it. This may or may not play out, but we don't really know how the recession will affect how people spend money. We didn't have frozen debt guide days this year, what is our tax revenue really going to be this year? And can we count that our, that we'll actually have more tax revenue? At this point, do we know that? Mental health correspondents, that's underway no matter what we do, we're waiting for Dole to set up our contract with the, with the one avenue. Meanwhile, Boulder County Co-responders is moving firing, forward with hiring co-responders, far as I understand. So that's underway no matter what we do. Animal control services, I just feel like we don't need to spend that money. We'll see what happens with our ordinances and our code. We went back to the drawing board, which I think was actually a good choice last Tuesday, Wednesday, but that should do a lot of the work for us, and Safebuilt can enforce whatever is in the code, and they can bring an officer along if they need to do a ticket. And then this is not likely, and again, I was the last one for the rebuild, but I'll put it out there, if we ever found one day, like, man, we really want to go back to a police department, this would be the least expensive way to do it, because we have to pay this, this contract amount for a year while we're also trying to ramp up. That's probably a moot point, I added that to, so that's my logic.
I guess my only logic for wanting option B is because, from what I understood from when I asked Miranda, that was sort of the coverage that we had with, when we had our own PD?
That's never the coverage we have, but it was the coverage we were always striving and recruiting for.
And, and we were always told that we needed that, that all of our officers were always quite busy, that Nederland is not Lyons, is not Superior, we are our own community, and unfortunately, we have needs, like it or not, that require police intervention. So the, I was just basing my decision on our needs for the community, based on what we were told from Fine Lovin', and, oh my God, was it Larry Johns? Sorry, forgot, poor guy. You know.
Gone and forgotten.
The name, not the person. But, and I'm just basing it on that, not, not because I want an overbearing police presence at all, I don't even, I would love, we live, we live in a society that we didn't have any police, that we could just, I would love that. But I just, based on staff recommendations from the past is where I came up with that need, and that's where I'm still sticking with it, because I don't think our need has gotten, gone down at all. So that's just, that's it, there's no other real reason.
What are other folks thinking?
Well, I just want to clarify something, because you had said, you know, give, give the comparison to Lyons, right? They spend less for less coverage. But my understanding is that that option, because we asked about it, is no longer available through Boulder County Sheriff's Office, they won't support that.
Yeah, and you know, I like to try my best if we stay away from, like, the business that the county does with Superior and Lyons with regards to whether, you know, whatever they might do ongoing to change the parameters. You know, we don't get the bro deal because we haven't been contracting with them for years, but we get the deal we're getting, we don't know what they'll do. Even if they up that, though, and went to option C, they have 500 more people there, you know, so they'd be paying less per person for, I, you know, and I, maybe they'd go with the higher one, but that would, that would be surprising, given what I heard.
Gotcha. And then, just as a clarifying point, whoever can answer this, the daytime coverage, where it's, you know, depending on the option that we go with, the three or four deputies, the sergeant, those are primarily from the hours of when to when?
Their shifts are six to six.
Six to six, okay.
Yes.
Otherwise, it's the same 50% coverage overnight that we're already experiencing, just to clarify for everyone.
But if, if I, Jennifer, you, we've talked through this, but the first thing that'll happen is that we'll just rebudget, like, the way we pay for night coverage will now come in under this contract. Our night coverage will continue, but it'll come into this contract versus the way we're paying for it now, where it's not free now anyways, we're paying for it, it'll just fold into this contract. Then their next step would be to hire the sergeant and then day coverage.
And just for the sake of clarity, it's not the same coverage at night as during the day, because there's a sergeant during the day.
Right.
Yeah, it's the same as what we're expecting, of what we have now.
The coverage at night is the same as what we have now.
Exactly.
But that won't be the same during the, during the day under the current.
Yep, now I got that.
That's all I was just trying to say.
Yeah, I got it. And then Attorney Madsen, do we have any clarity on what those upfront payments may or may not be? And if you don't, that's fine, I know that's something that we're potentially still working through, but if you had any more clarity on that, that'd be great.
So there's certain equipment that the town has to have in order to be contracting with Boulder County Sheriff's Office, so that would be, those will be costs that potentially the town will incur. We're working with the Sheriff's Office to determine whether the, the town's current equipment related to body worn cams, radios, if that can be used by the Sheriff's Office. Then there is also a question that's being worked out as far as invoicing and when invoicing will start for the particular personnel positions, and I don't have the final details on that.
Okay, no problem.
Sorry, could I clarify on that one? Because in the contract, it says that they'll provide equipment, so why does the town need to provide equipment?
There is a part of the contract that it, specific equipment is called out, the town has to provide. That the town shall provide, it's in paragraph three, a substation and the following equipment, goods and services to the Sheriff's Office to enable and assist the sheriff to provide services. That's including office furniture, computer hardware, installation of lines adequate for access to the sheriff's computer network, four body worn cams, and four radios. So those are the things that the town has to provide.
Yeah, that's interesting, because there is a separate section for equipment that says the Sheriff's Office will provide it in the same manner they provide equipment to all of the sheriff's deputies. So I assume that they provide body worn cameras.
And they would pass that cost on to the town regardless, so, you know, if it's spelled out in, as equipment that the town provides, or spelled out in equipment that the Sheriff's Office is providing, the, the cost would be passed on to the town one way or the other.
But it would be passed on, what, in the form of, it would be passed on in the form of salaries, then? Because all they're, all quoting us as salaries.
And indirect expenses, there are some other indirect expenses. And, and it would be part of the salaries, yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's just very, it's not a very transparent budget here that they're providing for us, it's just what feels like a completely arbitrary number, and it's a very high number. Like, I think it's ludicrously high, and I mean, it genuinely, genuinely makes me angry how high it is. I think it's absurd, what they're charging us for, for the coverage that they're providing. So I think we should give them as little money as humanly possible.
Well, I have a real quick question with regard to safety, public safety. Attorney Madsen, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we decide to go with option C, and then we do flip the switch to option B, say, end of May, when the busy season starts, is there, or is there not a ramp time before which we'll get additional deputies that will be assigned to the town? Or do they just come up immediately, like, as soon as we say we're going from C to B?
So if, if there is a thought that you want to go to option B in May, my recommendation would be to go to option B now. There is definitely going to be a ramp up time to move from a higher, from a low level staffing to a higher level staffing. And I can't remember, but somebody, I think that was Mayor Billy who explained it, that we need to write an amendment into the contract, the way the contract's drafted is for option C, we need to change the terms of the contract, it would need to be approved by the Board of Trustees, by the Boulder County Sheriff's Office, by the County Commissioners, so we'd, you know, we'd be dependent on meeting schedules, public meeting schedules to approve these contracts. And then there would be the hiring process. And I have been told that it will be anywhere from four to 12 months to get, to hire a deputy, and to get a deputy on board.
Those numbers keep changing. Yeah, that 12-month tie-in, that's a new one.
I guess.
I mean, see, I mean, who, you're being told by the Sheriff's Department that that's their estimate, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's four to 10 months, four to 12 months. I think they've been pretty consistent with the numbers.
Yeah, I feel like they said that at their.
No, you know, I think they said that from like, the option C or option, I mean, I think it was even like, you have, you know, up to a year, option C, B, or A. But the ramp up, I thought I'd heard it was more than four to eight month total, but I feel like, you know, they're being wisely conservative by saying that, but.
I guess it depends who's available.
Because a ramp up would be, you know, likely one person.
If we change, if you change to staffing level, what that means is that they would need to, to actually hire somebody for the position. So that's their time in hiring somebody for the position. It's not taking somebody who is in another assignment in a different part of the county and moving him to Netherlands, it is, it's actually hiring someone.
Which would be the case, if we went right with, with B, they still have to hire that other deputy, but there's going to be time that it takes to hire that person, too, you know, and it makes sense, to go from C to B later, there's just the administrative recontracting, the, the two boards have to approve time, and then they have to put it back out there. It's just hard, you know, it's hard to know how long it will take, I guess is, is probably the best answer.
Yeah, there are no switches that we can flip here.
Four to 12 months.
It's an intergovernmental agreement, so we can get extra duty for busy weekends, for events that we know that we're having. Festivals for.
But then we're paying for it.
Yeah, but we're paying less than we're paying.
Superior Lyons do that.
Normally that burden's on the festival promoter, that's, that's.
Yeah, could be.
Big content lately.
And we can still get extra duty, and they can pay for it.
Yeah, both Superior and Lyons do that, for, they use some for traffic, you know.
We can get the Rangers, right? If we have BCSO, can we get the Rangers again? No?
The Rangers don't work with Boulder County Sheriff's Office, so the Rangers will no longer be an option for the town.
Bummer, they were a good value, and they were very nice, too. So it has to be, when you, it, uh.
Has to be extra duty officers.
Can I ask, do you know why they don't work with the county?
They just, I know that they require Rangers who are supervision, and I believe that the Sheriff's Office, you know, they've got enough of their own deputies to provide the services. Rangers can never act independently of a law enforcement officer.
I didn't, I didn't realize that that wasn't going to be.
They were to address and issue a law enforcement officer, had to supervise them, had to be available to come out and assist them, they were really more of a, kind of a patrol type function, and could not make actual arrests or, or deal with major incidents.
Okay.
So we have to have our folks, anyway.
Okay, so.
Are learning more every day.
So you folks who haven't heard from yet, what do you, where are you leaning? Taking a poll here, Jesse, Tom, Nikki, I don't know if you.
I'm good with option C still.
I'm leaning to, to option B.
Okay. Nicole?
Yeah, so, as much as I can understand, like, your arguments for, you know, the unpredictability of the tax revenue, I think, you know, that's, that's a great argument of, there could be dips in sales, we've already heard about marijuana tax sales going down across statewide, that was a notification that came, you know, six months ago. And yet, there was a certain level of policing that I think the town was expecting, and, and that was at least, from a recommendation from both Boulder County and also, you know, what Miranda had mentioned at that meeting, was that it was more closely aligned with option B. And so I would be in favor of amending the IGA to go with option B.
I just want to make one last comment, just when, when we were, when, when we got an email after we already chose option C, and Chamberlain responded, like, sure, okay, that's fine, but you do realize this will result in longer response times, because there won't always be, there'll be less people actually in the town of Ned. And I just want to remind people that when we had our town hall, the biggest concern that people had for not wanting to use Boulder County Sheriff is because they said that would result in longer response times. And when they were here, Chamberlain, I believe that was his name, said that it wouldn't be longer response times, because there would be people in the station, you know, especially if you chose the higher hiring options, like B or A. And that made a lot of people feel a lot better, they're like, oh, I feel better. But it's very, we should be very transparent, and with option C, it's, he wrote it in an email, so it's, that, it will result in potentially longer response times if they're not around.
Yeah, they're, they're in half of that uncommitted time, if the, if the sergeant's not here, then.
Again, I mean, we're here to represent what people have said to us, not what we personally feel about police. And people have requested they did not want longer response times, because obviously, when you have a situation where you're calling 911, it's not because you are leisurely just having a cup of coffee, something's going on. So anyway, that's my final comment on it all.
Thanks. John?
Or Jesse?
And Jesse, I think, said C. John?
Jesse. No, I'll, I'll, I'll speak last.
Okay. Now you're, now's the time, Jesse already spoke.
Oh, okay, yeah.
He's going, he, he wants to stay with C, he's a.
Yep, okay. And you and Billy, you and Eric both have presented compelling arguments for, for option C. I definitely agree that we want to try to be as fiscally responsible as we can as a board, because we absolutely do not know what's coming down the pike with regard to additional revenues pouring in or not pouring in, you know, teetering on the edge of recession if we're not already there. We have some big concerns with regard to running a tight budget. However, there are a couple concerns that I have with option C, and I think the first one is that the Lyons comparison is a good one, Billy, but I guess the, the one argument that I could say might topple that a bit is RTD. We have a really easy method of access, let's put it that way, or for certain things, for certain events to happen in this town that I'd be a little bit concerned about. And, you know, I, history is never, you know, a crystal ball to tell you. And, you know, I, history is never, um, you know, a crystal ball to tell you what the future is going to be like. But there have been some, uh, quite disturbing incidents, um, historically in Netherlands that I, I can't compare with other towns in terms of crime. We have a wonderful town. We have a lot of great people who are willing to be sheepdogs and help protect this, this town. I would be very, um, be very surprised if, you know, we couldn't manage our own, um, for the most part with an option C. However, um, as, as Tanya said, I think the town really did speak up. And if I'm not mistaken, option B seemed to fit the bill for what the town voted for. Unless I'm missing something, the body cams thing is an interesting finding, Eric. I think that's a, that's a really interesting, um, dynamic that may blow that actual budget a little bit out of the water, if I'm not mistaken. And if it does, then I think to be responsible, we have to go with option C. But if it doesn't, and option B really fits into the, the, the need that the town and past, um, law enforcement officers, well, I'm very grateful that we had the, you know, the, the great privilege to learn from and get the opinions of, had stated previously that we need, um, I think we should, I, I can be compelled to change my position from option C back to option B, which was my, um, my original holding position, so.
Just so I'm clear, as we look at our options, we're looking at from the, the option C is, is a 712 and going to option B is 139 K bump. Um, and then, uh, going option A is a 47 K bump on top of that. Um, so, uh, and then John, to address your, your question, the body cam, uh, equipment is not terribly expensive. It's almost immaterial in light of the budget.
Okay, and I would assume that all the other, of the other needs stated, including the station and the internet connectivity and all those things, those are a one-off. Those are going to be needed no matter whether we go with C or B, I'm guessing.
Or even if. Our own department.
Yeah.
Uh, Miranda, how much did we budget this year for our own police department?
It's about 1.1 million.
1.1 million's in the budget already.
Correct.
That, that includes tax revenue as, as the way to pay for it? You know, I'm sorry.
Police bargaining is part of the general fund.
Okay. So I think our poll, um, is telling, and so I don't know whether we need guidance from.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, cool.
I move to repeal the decision to approve the Boulder County Sheriff's Office staffing level budget option C.
Second.
Macy, you want to take the roll?
Trustee Mountain?
Oh, just so I'm clear, so a, a yes means we're repealing C. A no means we're not repealing C, so no one gets that confused.
Repealing C and going to B.
Yeah, this is, we have to make another.
No, no, it has, that's our next.
Two motions.
So, so all, all, although we know a yes means we're repealing C, a no means we're not repealing C, and that's, that's all it means.
So no headline tomorrow morning, Netherlands disbands police department.
Netherlands didn't understand what they voted on. So Macy?
Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Kims Isma?
No.
Mayor Billy?
No.
Mayor Protem Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
No.
And Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
So the, the motion passes and so we have, I can't remember the word revoked, what's the word?
We have repealed.
Repealed, um, going with option C.
I now move to approve the Boulder County Sheriff's Office staffing level budget option B.
Second.
Macy, and then a yes on this would be a yes to moving to option B. A no would be a no to moving to.
But we are, we also still need to approve the contract, right?
Yes.
Okay, just trying to clarify.
Before we do go to vote, um, how much negotiation do we need to go through before we can have a contract ready to vote on? Do, or is the thing ready to go tonight? Or do any amendments?
Jennifer?
Jennifer?
It is, it's not finalized, but the resolution that's before you tonight would allow the mayor to um, sign it once it's final. It's in a very close form to being finalized, but it is not final. And the reason for that is so that we can be moving forward. And then it can be approved by the sheriff's office and approved by the county commissioners. And we don't have to wait for another meeting to approve the, the final form of the contract.
Great, so we effectively can approve the contract today.
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, so there's.
No more stalling.
No more material issues, right? Attorney Madsen, um, there's, we're not going to get a shock later that we, uh, we make a decision and they say, oh, we need another 100K.
Um.
She's going to negotiate the heck out of it.
Well, right, I mean, as much as, as much as we can, um, in the position that Netherlands is in. But yes.
Okay.
I mean, I suppose if that happens, Billy.
Right.
If we're signing it.
Yeah.
Call in emergency, we go back to C or something.
Yes.
Okay, then. Let's get it off.
Okay, go ahead, Macy.
All right, so just to clarify, this was a move to approve the staffing level at option B.
So a yes, a yes is to go to option B, a no is to not go to option B.
Right.
Okay, Trustee Kims Isma?
No.
Trustee Severs?
No.
Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And Mayor Billy?
No. So that motion also passes, so we'll be going to with option B?
I now move to approve resolution 2023-18, approving the IGA with Boulder County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Services with Staffing Level Budget Option B.
Second. Macy, when you're ready.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
I'm confused on what this vote is for versus the last one.
This is to approve the IGA.
The resolution.
Yeah, the, the resolution for the IGA. So basically that, um, Mayor Billy has the ability to sign it.
So, yeah, what we did, what happened was an amendment basically over the last two votes. And now we're, we're, we're voting on.
Now we're just voting to authorize Billy to execute.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, I vote yes.
Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Trustee Kims Isma?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Mahold?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the motion passes, so we'll be, um, moving ahead to, uh, contract with the Boulder County Sheriff's Office. And it's staffing, staffing level option C, especially if they're, don't throw an extra hundred grand on the mix. I just want to commend everyone, I thought that was good governance, good, good, good stuff, good governance, listening to people, talking through it. Help, help, thanks Jennifer to teach us, you know, how, how to do such a, a change at this stage, so it was well done.
I agree, um, I'm proud of you all as, as colleagues for, for overturning that and doing it successfully, even though I was not, uh, in the voting in the majority on that round. No hard feelings, and I think that, uh, being able to make decisions and for us to vote and go on with it is an important role that we're, we're fulfilling. And I don't think that having consensus on every vote is, is our goal necessarily. And, um, yeah, so I think you guys are good.
Thanks, everyone. So, um, with that, uh, I want, we could, we'll move on to action item 6.2, the ordinance amendment for lot line consolidations. I guess before we start this, I would like to say, the place of good governance, thank you to all the work that went into making this kind of, uh, agreement happen. Thanks to Nicole and Jesse and, and to Ron Mitchell to, to work in through this. And Ron, doing some things in good faith, to hold off on his application for lot consolidation and, and for Ron for, with that moratorium gone, opening up his parking, appreciate that. And for Miranda for just really having the clarity to come up with this kind of, um, idea and, and compromise, and also I think you and Ron have trust with each other, and I think that goes a long way too. So thank you all, uh, thank you, Steve and, and the planning commission for moving your meeting up a couple of weeks to make this happen too. Thanks. That being said, go for it, Miranda.
So, uh, tonight before you is the lot line consolidation ordinance. Uh, as a reminder, as we talked about in February, um, there is now a component to a lot line consolidation that requires a PUD to happen regardless of the lot size. So if someone seeks a lot line consolidation, it will automatically trigger a PUD. Um, as a reminder, the PUD is not required at the time in which someone seeks a lot line consolidation. They can come back with the PUD later. And really the goal of this was to kind of work through with property owners and just the redevelopment and figure out how do we find a way in which the community can give input on these large scale developments? And the PUD really is the most appropriate, uh, avenue for that to occur because it's a bit of a blank slate and allows the BOT and the community and planning commission to put in certain regulations uh, related to yard and bulk and setbacks and other design standards or whatever else the community and the board feels like. We brought this to the planning commission. Again, yes, thank you to the planning commission for moving their meeting up. They reviewed ordinance 838 at their meeting and they unanimously recommended approval of it and also saw kind of the value of adding this in. So tonight is your official public hearing for this ordinance, since it is an amendment to chapter 16 and 17. Uh, if it is approved tonight, it will take effect April 23rd. There is currently no official complete application ready to go before the planning commission for April, but we do anticipate one potentially going before the planning commission. If it does, this ordinance would be already be in effect by the time the planning commission reviewed that lot line consolidation application. So really the question before you tonight is, do you approve ordinance 88?
Any clarifying questions for Miranda? If not, we can move to public comment on the ordinance amendment for lot consolidations. Anyone in the room? Anyone online, any comments?
There are, and I should have mentioned this earlier, there are a few call-in users. Everyone's muted upon entry now, so they'll have to press star six if they want to.
If you're talking, we can't hear you, so if press star six. And if not, a little bit more.
Jim Reese?
Jim?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Jim Reese, uh, 66 Barker Road. I'm on the planning commission and I just wanted to call in and say that, uh, this was a pretty straightforward, uh, item, uh, aim for our, uh, planning commission to look at. Uh, we looked at the history behind it and what the planning, or the BOT was trying to accomplish in the central business district. And, uh, unanimously, we agreed that that accomplished, uh, the mission. There was a few offshoot questions, but overall we thought it was good, straightforward ordinance that, uh, accomplished the mission of triggering a PUD before, uh, construction on a, uh, large project is allowed to begin. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the Board of Trustees for final question, discussion and motion.
You first. I was going to move to approve, uh, ordinance 838, amending article seven of chapter 17 on the lot consolidation process, amending article six of chapter 16 on the planned unit development process.
My second.
That was a second by Trustee Sterling. Go ahead.
Uh, Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Kims Isma?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold?
Yes.
Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
And Trustee Severs?
Yes.
Thank you.
And bravo, everybody who worked on this, thank you.
Yeah, great job. This is.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Nicole, Miranda.
Thank you.
That's Miranda. Jesse.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, congratulations, Miranda, and we haven't said that yet, but, uh, Miranda.
I was saving it for other business, but.
I know.
We'll, we'll bring it up then too. You earned your PhD, great job. Um, 6.3, Transportation Alternatives Program Grant, the TAB grant, um.
So I was going to introduce this, but we have Nikki Dunn, Parks Manager here, who oversees sidewalks. So she's here to chime in whatever I leave off. Um, but we were recently informed about a transportation alternatives program. Uh, Dr. Cog reached out to us and then Mayor Protem Mahold also sent it on and encouraged us to look at some programs. Um, we met as a team with, uh, Mark Hall, Streets Manager, and Andrew Bliss, Utility Supervisor, and searched through all the different components of that grant, and sidewalks were the ultimate winner. Um, we really felt like we obviously have, we're doing the transportation improvement projects, safer main streets. Those are on the west side. Um, we obviously have problems on the east side as we head down into downtown. So we had to do an initial pre-meeting with CDOT in order to be able, eligible to apply. And there's only $12 million in this fund. And so while we're very passionate about eventually addressing First Street and the sidewalks, that is a multimillion dollar project and likely not a competitive grant. And so in an effort to not just throw it away and recognizing we have other problems, we felt like we really need to replace the crusher fine on Snyder, second down to East. Um, the crusher fine sidewalks were constructed in 2015, 16. That is your Ned Pets project. Um, and while really great in theory, the whole point was to help ideally deal with drainage and to be this, um, surface that could help with like filtering water, surface water, doesn't quite work. We end up with sand all over the streets every year. Um, it's uneven and ultimately for us and, and for Nikki and all, she can speak to this more, it's an ADA issue. It didn't get, we do not allow people with mobility assistive devices to use that. They're going down the middle of the street because that is just not a functional sidewalk. And this grant really narrows in on the ADA needs and making sure that sidewalks are more accessible. Um, when we spoke to CDOT, he already knew about our crusher fine project and he was like, great plan. We love the idea of replacing that. And so we are asking that we go forward. Uh, it does require a 20% match. And so the grant application is 321,000 and some change. Town's match would be approximately 64,000. We have not had a chance to ask the DDA to support us with that, but that's very much our intention. However, the draft application is due Friday. So we're really looking for the town to commit to moving forward and allowing us the space to kind of sort out the financials on the backend later so we can at least get the grant in. Um, we do feel this is very competitive and CDOT did also verify that, especially at the financial level it is because they want to fund multiple projects. But Nikki, do you have anything else you want to add?
Yeah, uh, it was, this is Nikki Dunn, Parks, Parks Manager for the town. It was, uh, refreshing to hear the, the fellow that was talking with us at CDOT say, I, I can't even believe you guys did that project in the beginning. We were against it from the very beginning. And it is the truth that, uh, as soon as I came on board, even when the sidewalks were brand new that very first year, they became a maintenance issue. Um, anytime you have more than a half an inch of difference in the crusher fine to curb surface, then you are out of compliance with the ADA. So I am facing this daily, absolutely daily. In fact, some days we'll go through and fix a section and it'll rain that afternoon and we're done. So, um, this to me would make, uh, a world of difference. It would free up a lot of staff time on maintaining, maintaining those sidewalks in the downtown Snyder Street area. It would add the sidewalks to that little strip of Snyder Street in front of Tin Shed Salto. Um, eventually, hopefully to connect into brand new First Street sidewalks, but that is a bigger project that I don't have the tea for at the moment. Um, so we'll do what we can to eat this elephant and, um, um, anything that we can do to help my ADA residents in town, our ADA residents, um, in mobility issues and not just for people who have mobility issues, but moms with strollers, dads with strollers, people walking down the streets or, you know, doing what, what they're doing. Um, the crusher fines are really not, they were a nice thought, um, but they don't work. They work better on trails than they do on those sidewalks. better on trails than they do on those sidewalks and they added when you added the curb element into it it just became a channel for water to run down so I am coming to you asking you like Miranda said for your blessing to continue on with this tap grant I think it's a it's nice to see the relationship between us and CDOT improving to see their support of the town of Netherland and hopeful that they seemed hopeful and I seem I'm hopeful that we could actually succeed in getting this grant and getting that section of town a little more friendly
a question Nikki is it is the end result gonna be kind of like what we have near near RTD where we put concrete inside the same bounds
absolutely yeah that's more what it will look like
you're just scraping the cinders and then pouring concrete
yep
so those rails stay and can to some degree accomplish whatever whatever permeates they can somewhat direct
less concrete to have to pour maybe I'll get the crusher fines back and be able to utilize them on a trail project someplace
yeah that's a great idea
so and actually where the curb lines are if you know where the RTD section is if you've ever walked that section we removed the crusher fines and we paved that with concrete so it's not a great job we
it's good enough
we're not we're not concrete workers but we did our best and it's better than what it was for sure but you could see the the curb makes makes another kind of a crack on the edge of the sidewalk where the water does run down and makes a little bit of a channel there keeps it off the road a little bit so and then there's that section of Snyder Street where we would have to remove some asphalt replace some of that Snyder Street as Mark knows he inherited Snyder Street as a kind of a turd so we'll try and polish her up a bit and put a nice sidewalk in on the side there and allow people to travel down the sidewalk at least in that section and then like I said hopeful till one day connect to some really nice first street sidewalks
cool Miranda do we know rough do we know do we have any indication what our chances are when a decision gets made and then do we have to use the money in a certain amount of time
yeah so we do have the draft so you have to submit a draft and then if they accept your draft then you're invited to submit an actual application it's really getting through that hurdle if you're invited to submit a real application you're likely going to get funded now they didn't they didn't tell us exactly how likely we weren't to get funded but they were very supportive of the project in terms of the deadline to completion we set that ourselves and so it was really important to CDOT that we were mindful you know if there were any sort of easements or or things we need to consider we had originally talked to them about first street but the undergrounding of the wire of the electrical was going to be very challenging but they said like set a very realistic deadline and we have a three CDOT projects right now and they're very much supportive of let's be realistic you're gonna have hurdles account for those hurdles and so if it's a four year project that they're comfortable with that but they want us to break ground summer twenty twenty three
wow the more often we can get CDOT in alignment that's a win in my book
do we think the Indy DA would cover the full twenty percent is that the request
no you know what I would say and Barbara Hartz on here and I know she can't speak for the DDA or Tanya but I think the DDA has been more interested in at least a cost share it doesn't I'm not necessarily saying fifty fifty but they have felt it seems that they felt lately like they'd like to see town support and not keep going to the DDA for all their money I of course can make the ask but I think it's more of a negotiation of what that percentage split could look like but I don't know if we could always ask Barb if she has some initial thoughts not to put her on the spot
maybe they can sell bricks
yeah I mean that's you know recently you know historically we always have gone to the DDA for full funding but kind of some of the recent comments I've received is they also want to feel like the town is putting a little skin in the game here and so that's why they like to see a cost share but I'm not saying it has to be a fifty fifty split but some financial contribution going into this project and we saw that with the transportation master plan where they funded a portion and we funded a portion
well and one more clarify so the three things that were done for stormwater drainage and filtering that all remains right the recharge recharge zone under second street and the rock zones and the
yeah none of that will be touched although that the where we did that project has become so inundated with the crusher fines from the project that it's you can't even vacuum it anymore it second street doesn't drain appropriately so after we finish the sidewalks and do the sidewalks in concrete we could try doing a couple vacuumings and maybe we could get it back a little bit but we've really compacted it with years of crusher fines and just dirt not just crusher fines but dirt wind takes care of that too sorry to cuss but wind does put that dirt right into our streets and takes it from the dirt road and puts it on our paved roads so like it or not that project is seeing seeing some abuse I would say
it's ironic that we had that our zoning has Dyno Mo's put in that fancy ADA access but they have to come down a sidewalk
yeah it's so absurd I was gonna ask in some of our other CDOT projects tips and stuff we're using pavers I'm wondering if that was considered for this project
I'm actually who did I talk to recently that they said we were talking about using pavers down safer main streets and I said we're you guys are we're just asking for another maintenance nightmare on the especially on the highway lines where you're gonna get those pavers are gonna be hit by plow after plow after plow people are gonna be parking on them and then you get one paver out of sync and all the pavers are out of sync so I personally am hoping to get away from the pavers it's especially on my sidewalk areas on the highway
it won't work for ADA either
no it won't no we're asking for another nightmare by using pavers and they're more expensive
yeah they're definitely more expensive
and more labor and more labor so
I guess to answer your question as safer main street stands right now it is pavers
who did I talked to so I talked to someone and said let's move away from the papers
you wanna it's pretty deep in the CDOT design phase you'll wanna get with Nathan on that
are we talking about the other
take that aside but yes
well one of the one of the reasons was drainage and so if that is an ongoing issue if there are strategic ways to use them that would be less of a maintenance worry like that something I'm interested in
we meet with our engineer on Call Engineer Weekly and so we'll make sure to add this
doesn't have to be pavers everywhere all the time but if for whatever reason it's strategically more useful to use them in a certain area
yeah
yeah definitely I mean some of that permeability I mean that was part of the whole idea the cinders you know and if there's any way to achieve some of that it helps with stormwater enough but
well is the is the water gonna be directed into the creek there or something like is that I mean
it'll be all of our water gets channeled into the same storm drains
yeah it'll just go to those
to our normal storm drains it'll all go to headworks eventually before it hits most of it will go into my hope is that it'll hit those storm drains before it hits Gercio Field yes and then into the performance space and wherever else it's going so my hope is that with this project that we can realign some of that some of the drainage problems that we're suffering with down in that area
so you're taking that into account for sure in the design
yep well I mean I would like to make a motion to approve this
we gotta do public comment we gotta make public comment
sorry
we're getting there these are good
I had one more question which was that you were talking about second street drainage issues adding remediation for that to this grant is not viable
I'm not saying it's not but your match increases
right I just just throwing that out there if we're gonna do work on a street but also we know other work is needed can we do it all at once or not
because yeah are we looking at more maintenance like Gercio someday if we don't
I guess I'll talk to Mark here to speak to that
yeah I mean I think it's something that we we have to look at and if we can get the funding but it's not just second street I think the whole area of downtown needs to be addressed so if we do second street I think we should think about everything as a whole as we move forward especially with the downtown area of first street third street still a dirt roads I mean there's a lot of problems that we need to address going forward
right and I think that the the challenge here is that that's not going to addressing drainage across the board in downtown it's not gonna be an eligible expense we can only tie I mean but we could tie some financial structure type finances to this and then look for alternative funding for the other areas I think that your approval really tonight though is that you're saying yes we go forward with the grant we can then amend the grant request amount based on this feedback
oh we can because yeah because it seems like even though we can't do all of downtown in those neighborhoods we should do second street right so we have to go back later when we're doing everything else better say oh second street didn't quite make it we should do it right and that whole round
yeah we could send that to you of course in an email but the grant is due Friday
yeah okay just the more grants that we have to write to do this work the the more work it is right so if we can do two things in one grant then I feel like we should do two things in one grant
yeah we do feel and to your point we do feel this is a good application because it does connect safer main streets and tips and then our next will be to Nikki's point going to first street and so we do recognize that every financial opportunity is good because it helps create stronger applications the next go around because we're saying well this ties into all this other work we just did
makes sense any other clarifying questions if not we'll go to public comment in the room first any folks have a comment on this tap grant hearing none we'll go online any folks out there do you have any comments on this grant
there's a call in user that thinks they're not to press star six
go ahead press star six and tell us who you are
sir Ron Mitchell I am incredibly delighted to hear about this the crusher fine every rain in front of the houses at forty fifty and sixty second street washes out into a gully six to eight inches deep I've even filled it myself a few times just because it's so dangerous I encourage the board to vote for this this has really been the biggest mess the town has ever created I'm so glad somebody's decided to do this the one thing I would suggest where the town actually did the fill on East Street they made a monolithic pour it hasn't cracked I at least haven't seen any cracks yet but I would highly recommend you be sure that you put expansion joints about every four feet in the concrete and thank you for the opportunity for comment Ron Mitchell
now go back and rest because you just got out of a surgery didn't you sir
thanks Ron
and he did it within three minutes yeah two minutes
any other public comments hearing none we'll bring it back for final discussion and a motion
I move to approve
I make a motion to approve this but I don't know what the actual verbiage
yeah sorry
a tap grant
yeah and I didn't put a propose motion apologize yeah you're basically approving staff applying
I forgot to bring my computer
under with the grant funding at what is determined after we add in the drainage it just comes
oh wait I make a motion to approve the tap funding under which the grant finding to improve the drainage
yeah I mean I guess that's
awesome
the biggest thing I guess just for the record I think for Maisy is that the opinion of probable cost will not stay the same it will increase
if we add more to it is that gonna lower our chances for getting it though
no no when we were gonna try and we originally talked about going for two million and that definitely would have lowered our chances of getting it because that's you know a fifth of it
that's a that's a half a million dollar match or whatever
whole grant is twelve
the whole grant is twelve for the entire region four which is huge I mean that's the entire metropolitan area we can't then ask for a quarter of it although we want to but this is a lot more competitive
do we have a real motion
yeah that was my motion
hold second
got a motion in a second Maisy
I heard trustee Mountain second but I'll change that
oh you did okay
oh
well not after her motion like her full motion so I think we'll go with mayor Pretzamahol
okay good
um all right trustee Corvalon
yes
trustee Mountain
you had me at ADA accessibility yes
trustee Severs
yes
trustee Sterling
yes you had me at no more sandy sidewalks
mayor Pretzamahol
yes
mayor Billy
yes
and trustee Kims Isma
yes
thank you
thanks everybody yeah loving it so now we'll move on to six point four the Pro SAB regular board member vacancy appointments
yeah so this was coming before you there was let me take it back Jesse Ansari Chair of Pro SAB resigned and so there was a vacancy we posted for the vacancy the same applicants who had applied for the alternate when Casey was appointed applied for the vacancy so they again interviewed before the Pro SAB board the Pro SAB board voted to recommend Jason Swan as the pointy it was a four three vote so it was very close and so wanted to bring it before you however just last night I learned that Brian Curtis is also submitting his resignation reason for that is that his term ends in June and he feels that Lindsay and Jason are incredible candidates and he'd rather give up his space now since he isn't seeking reappointment in hopes that you appoint both of them there is no reason you can't appoint both Lindsay and Jason tonight to the two vacant board positions we typically post vacancy for twenty one days but we don't have to and so while I believe we have Jason on and maybe Lindsay on the phone I'm not sure to introduce themselves asked tonight would be actually to appoint both to the currently two vacant positions and not post Brian's position again since we'd likely see the same applicants and Chewie did withdraw his application so there are only the two applications for now currently two vacancies
wow
but again if you wanted to let Jason introduce himself and and I don't know if Lindsay's on the phone but I'm thinking maybe Jason do you want to go ahead
hey can you all hear me
yes
excellent thank you Miranda and thank you mayor and thank you BOT for this opportunity
to speak my name is Jason Swan I am you know more than my title as I always like to say but everybody likes to hear that I am a conservation finance director for the Trust of Boston lover of nature and all things Netherland I've moved here often on for along sixteen thirty four Caribou Road and as I mentioned at the Pro SAB meeting last week one of the reasons that draw me to Netherland is because this was one of the first places that I was able to visit I moved up Porte de la Rode towards Arapaho Pass in A Door through one of the most beautiful places I've witnessed a lot and something that did so much benefits to my mental health illness I wanted to be able to show a lot of people and call this place home and I will say you know I was very heartened and inspired by the locals here I've had an opportunity to meet a lot of people since I've been here and you know I I really see people inspired by what's in their backyard right and wanted to protect it and so I feel the same way I'll be purchasing the home off of Caribou Road here in June and I want to be able to give back any way that I can to a community that's given so much back and I'll finally I'll say that another reason why this is very important to me not only because it's the work that I do already working with local governments like the farmers teachers you name it to create the conservation funding just last year I raised about two hundred and forty million via ballot measures right and you know I was gonna say is is you know one of the number one contributing to the one sense of community is not really our usual suspects it's not the job not the economy it's not education but it's actually green and public spaces so I'm taking that to heart this is the reason why I want to be a part of this court
thanks Jason appreciate it
Lindsay are you on the phone and if so star six not sure if Lindsay was gonna make it so
great trustee Severs is board liaison do you have anything to say
I support Miranda's recommendation I was highly impressed with Jason's candidacy his his interview in front of our board and I think he would be a fantastic addition to the team really looking forward to working with him and learning from him and I think he'll be a great benefit to the community and I think this is a great first step for him to to get involved and really grateful and hats off to you Jason for stepping forward and I'm I'm really excited to see what we can do together
this is great board It's a great board. Okay.
Do we need public comment, or can we?
Public comment, thank you, is there, no, we need public comment. So is there any public comment for folks in the room? Folks online? Hearing none, we can go ahead and bring it back for final discussion and the motion.
After you.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, both of them look like amazing candidates. And if we have two vacancies, I don't see why we would not go ahead and appoint both of them.
Yeah, I was going to say I moved to appoint Jason Swan and Lindsay Ute to the Parks Recreation and Open Space Advisory Board. Thank you guys both for stepping up, really thrilled to have you on board.
I second.
And just to point out, actually, do both of those positions, what are the end dates?
June twenty twenty seven for both.
For both, okay, so these would be four-year commitments plus, thank you. Macy?
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Kimses smile?
Yes.
Mayor Putnam Mahol?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're on a roll.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, everyone. It's, anyone needs a break? You can take it now, otherwise we can roll into discussion items, we have two discussion items. And first one is seven point one, streets equipment lease agreement, and Mark, Miranda, and Rita, I think I saw online, will be, will be talking with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. My name is Mark Hall, and I'm the Streets Manager for the Town of Netherlands. I'd like to bring to you or bring to your attention a significant matter affecting our town. Equipping our Streets Department with the right tools. During the twenty twenty-three budget talks, the former Streets Supervisor Emmett Pelletier emphasized the urgent need for new equipment to handle the persistent drainage issues we face. I have taken this concern, and today I'm here to present a proposal that has been developed to secure the much-needed equipment to address these challenges. The Streets Department has a plan to purchase a used water truck outfitted with a new water tank, pumps and sprayers, a new motor grader with software to aid operators, and more efficient grading practices, and a new flatbed truck to transport culverts around town. These vital upgrades to our fleet will significantly enhance our ability to solve Netherlands drain its issues and maintain safer roads for our residents. For funding these purchases, we allocated a hundred and forty thousand dollars in the two thousand and twenty-three Streets Fund for Equipment and Vehicles. However, after careful evaluation, we have realized that this budget will not allow the Streets Department to make the impact it desires. We need the support of the Board of Trustees to secure a five-year loan amounting to approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars per year to ensure that our department can efficiently address our town's needs. We have reviewed proposals from Holman Capital Corporation, UMB Bank, and Clayton Holdings LLC. And we are confident that we can acquire the necessary equipment while staying within our budget. Therefore, we would like the Board of Trustees to consider the following questions. Number one, do you approve of purchasing the equipment under a five-year loan agreement with an annual repayment amount of approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars per year? And if so, do you have a preference for which lender to work with based on the equipment financing proposals provided? Your thoughtful consideration and guidance on this matter are invaluable. By supporting this proposal, you will enable us to enhance the Streets Department's capabilities and better serve our community. On behalf of the Streets Department, I thank you for your time, dedication, and commitment to improving Netherlands infrastructure.
Well done.
Thanks, Mark.
Any preference, I addressed this to both of you among banks, or which source you go to for financing?
I think we'll actually default that, for that question, Rita, are you there? Rita was the one who worked on, meeting with the financial representatives. Some have just exceptional customer service, others have easier documents to understand, Reed. Rita, do you have a preference of which lender you'd prefer?
I did not hear Tom's question, but I assume it's which one I prefer, right?
Yes, correct.
He was asking, well, I just quickly wanted to just go with the three proposals, just really briefly. Because obviously there is some difference. So the Holman Capital, Lance actually came and met with Miranda and I. And you can see his interest rates for the five-year loan is at five point one eight percent. And that actually expires that interest rate that he quoted us on in a couple of days. So any of these quotes that we're looking at tonight may or may not obviously stay the same. So Holman Capital also would charge us a five thousand dollar documentation fee. Then UMB, and by the way, all of these, we asked them to give us a quote six hundred thousand, because that's kind of what we're thinking that equipment may end up costing. And so all these three quotes are staying within that roughly hundred and thirty-five to hundred and forty thousand dollar payment per year. So UMB, they are just, they just gave us kind of a general idea, they quoted us four point seven five to five point two five percent. And five-year amortization would be around hundred and thirty-five thousand per year. However, they are. They are, the fee would be ten thousand five hundred dollars to set this up. And the last one is the whole Clayton Holdings, which is subsidiary of the Commerce Bank. And that's who we have a loan through right now for our plow. And we'll have our last payment with them next year. And they actually, their interest rate is the lowest at four point two one percent. And their fee would be two hundred and fifty dollars. So, I mean, depends on what you're going for. Like Miranda had mentioned, some of these documents are really hard to read, I feel. The one from Clayton Holdings seemed very straightforward to me personally. But really, that is something for the board to decide.
What's your preference?
Are you, are you happy with them with regards to the plow and how things have gone?
Right, so the plow, like I said, obviously, that, that, that loan had been in place when I started, and obviously, we pay them a couple of times a year, and that's it. And, I mean, there's no problem at all.
Are you making a recommendation of one of those three?
I personally would have recommended to go with Clayton Holdings.
Thank you.
Yeah, from looking at the contract, I can see why.
I'm sorry, I have a hard time hearing Tom.
The contract is pretty straightforward.
Yes.
I like that. There's no prepayment penalty on any of these, right, Rita?
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, if, also on that Clayton Holdings, their rates are fixed until April tenth. So we have a little bit of time there.
Great.
And again, we were recommending the five-year versus the seven-year loan, just to get those loans paid off sooner.
Yeah, what's the life of the equipment?
I would say it's going to be significantly higher than what we currently have. I mean, I don't think I have a single piece of equipment that, I mean, besides the freightliner, which we are about to pay off the loan, every other piece of equipment we have is over thirty years old.
Vintage.
Extremely, yes.
That's what we call it.
Well, that does lead me to, I love a five-year plan. It leads me to my question, which is, in the next five years, what do we have slated in terms of large equipment purchases?
Besides this.
Besides these items?
Besides these items, I mean, this would be the biggest improvement that we've had for the town probably ever. So just with the motor grader alone, I think that's going to solve a huge amount of issues that we have. The loader that we have is in great working order. We have a couple other pieces of equipment that do a great job or do not get utilized enough for it to really factor into any sort of needs going forward.
No, I think, and this was really your question, trustee Kimses smile of Emmett when he came was like, give us this plan. And so I really appreciate that Mark took it and ran with it. Your vehicles, your everyday trucks, those are just, those are going to need to replace over time. Typically, what happens, though, is utilities has the financial means to do so. They get their new vehicles and Parks and Streets gets the hand-me-downs, but it's been working. But, you know, they have two thousand, two two thousand eleven Silverados in the Streets Department that are barely surviving. And so those are things we have to be mindful of. And just as a reminder, the hundred and forty together includes the forty thousand for Lightning. Ford gave us approval to move into a regular vehicle, which you're applying to the flatbed truck in order to get a vehicle now. And then if the Lightning comes and our number is called, we'll come back to you to figure out how to free up that money that then replaces the trucks. But I think that's the, those are like the large equipment, is just going to be those standard vehicles that are needed.
So in the next five years, we can probably anticipate that we're going to need to spend more money on a couple of trucks.
Yes.
And right now, there are no, like, obvious, large pieces of equipment that in the next five years are going to need to be replaced. Obviously, I know you can't predict disasters, right? But like, just in terms of what we got, looking at the fleet, we're looking at spending a hundred and forty grand for the next five years, and that's pretty much it, just maybe a couple of trucks here and there.
Yes, and the, I mean, my plan for the next five years is to fix the drainage problems that we have around town. So I think that's what I'm going to focus on, anything else would be kind of on the back burner, at least for the next five years, given no tragedy happens to anything that we have.
Great, yeah, it's just easier to make a hundred and forty thousand dollar commitment for a one year, for one year of a budget, right? It's a little harder to make it for five years, not knowing what's coming down the line, so.
Right, and, and just a kind of logistical, this obviously, the hundred and forty thousand is coming out of the Streets Fund this year because that funding was there. That is not a Streets Fund budget moving forward, we won't have that, those finances, this is a general fund commitment that would come out of the Public Works Street side of the general fund.
Well, isn't there a street fund from some sales tax that makes about a hundred thousand a year?
No, I mean, that's how much we, we had a ton sitting in reserves, which is what we freed up for this year, to do these large equipment purchases. You don't, that's not bringing in that kind of money, it's the money that's been sitting there year after year. That really, by purchasing this equipment, gives Streets the ability to do all the work that the Streets Fund is really for. You know, that, they need that money to buy equipment so they can do the work, it's not just about doing the work.
Right.
Just to be clear, I want to approve this, right? I just want to approve it kind of knowing for you guys and future boards and, you know, moving forward here, like, what are we expecting coming down the pipe?
Yep. Question, is, do we, is there ever any grants available that we could pursue for this type of thing?
Very challenging. Yes and no, I mean, there is infrastructure funding out there, but oftentimes, it like precludes equipment. You know, you're really looking at more like actually completing the work. And I think that's often why we, why we stretched these for so long. I mean, Chris Pelletier was like the champion of grants, and if anyone got a grant for equipment, it would have been Chris. And we've been sitting with thirty-plus equipment because it's not typically a funding.
No.
I'm guessing Jesse wants, Jesse, there's a lot of feedback, which why I keep muting you, but I'm guessing Jesse wants to say something.
I should raise my hand instead of unmute. I think it's my dog snoring in the background.
Is it, or that, or it's you snoring, I don't know?
I'm in support of this. It is, it is a lot of money. Would we be able to sell our old motor grader and recoup a little bit there? Just a quick question.
So I had an appraiser come out and appraised the grader that we have as a possible trade-in, and it came back right around fifty thousand dollars if we traded in the grader that we have now, which would definitely help out.
It's not nothing.
Whenever we can, we try to sell everything we can. It doesn't mean we'll get a lot of money, like the Mack truck, there's, it's like, we might as well just give it away. I think Emmett was considering even listing on Craigslist and had no success if he even did.
Or we set it up in town somewhere as a vintage.
We're going to put a free sign on it, but, but anywhere we can, like, even the police, anytime we're going to try to get new, we're always going to try to sell off the old. And that's just the best.
I need an airport car, I'd take a Mack truck.
Oh. You need a CDL, right? And I have to get that CDL first, Tom. But yes, trustee Severs, that's always our goal, and Mark has definitely done that work, which is great.
The other piece of equipment that I noticed is pretty old, is the excavator. And I've been thinking you guys ought to be looking at a new excavator at some point, and, you know, you're going to be hauling those culverts around, you're going to use an excavator to put them in the ground as well as, I don't know if that's a utilities machine, or is that the Streets machine?
Yeah, the excavator is a Streets machine as well, that's just one of the pieces of equipment I was speaking to that we don't use quite as often. A lot of times when we do the culverts, we can utilize the backhoe as well. And the excavator is actually going through a bit of an overhaul now, we've had really leaky hydraulic hoses for probably the life of the machine, so we're fixing all of those. And it'll be in at least working order to do what it needs to do going forward.
Gotcha, and then the one last thing, just in terms of budgeting for Streets and utilities and, and, and equipment in general, that I want to keep in everybody's mind is just maintenance, you know? I, I hire and, and, and keep employed almost a full-time mechanic, and I don't have as much equipment as the, as the town. And, you know, I came up on Keywith, it's like the largest excavation company in the world. And I, I was chatting with one of their service truck maintenance operators, and he pointed out that bulldozer to me, and he said, that, that bulldozer, what do you think it, how's it look? Does it, how, how old do you think it looks? I looked at it, it looked brand new, he said, it's got ten thousand hours on it, which is, you know, you know, many years of full-time operating. And it really just kind of comes down to having a good maintenance plan. And, yeah, I don't think that having our operators be responsible for maintenance is necessarily the right strategy for, for maintenance-ing everything. And so it's something that I want to just kind of encourage Miranda, for you to keep in mind as you're discussing with Mark and with Nikki and, and Andrew as well, just in terms of, you know, how are we going to ensure maintenance on an ongoing basis, on a regular basis? And keeping up with everything so we don't have breakdowns in the field. And I think that could end up costing some money as well. Maybe it's a new position, I don't know. But I just want to say, like, as far as my appetite for spending on Public Works and the equipment and whatnot, yeah, that's higher than I was anticipating for. I, but I looked at all your prices and line items, and those all look reasonable and right in line with what I'd look at and, or what I would expect. And I'm in favor of, of furnishing you, you all with, with good equipment that's reliable and new and up to date. And really appreciate the work that you guys do, Mark, and, and your, your, your staff as well.
Thank you.
One last question, Miranda, on vehicles, did we dispose of the police vehicles already?
I'm working on it. So we did sell off one to Boulder County, the one that had a lease, Boulder County took over our lease, and we made some revenue. Looks like Golden Gate, Golden Gate Fire Department? I feel like that's, is that a fire department? I'm looking to Nikki, there is a fire department that is taking likely the unmarked, and then we're going to take all the rest to auction.
Okay, in the process.
Any other clarifying questions on, on this? From, from the trustees, if not?
Yeah, one question, we're, this is a discussion item tonight, when does it become an action item?
So if, if you give us the green light, we would bring this actually back on consent with the official contract with whatever lender you want to go with, and we'll ask that you approve it on April fourth. So Mark ideally has all the equipment in time for summer.
Excellent, okay, this sounds like a plan.
Any public comment in the room? On this investment in our, if, if town infrastructure, any comment online? Hearing none, we'll bring it back. And I think the aim just calls for, as you said, it'll, we plan to have it come back for consent. The things we have to, we, we have to talk about approving purchasing equipment and then approving this, and then also which lender, although I think we answered, do we approve this? Just look for now to forward, does the BOT approve purchasing equipment under a five-year loan agreement with an annual repayment of around a hundred and forty thousand a year?
Yeah, I do, and I just want to reinforce how much I appreciate that this is part of a strategy and a plan for what you want to do with Town Streets moving forward. I think that is like, that's what seals the deal, right?
You had him at plan. Five-year strategy and he melts.
So I think we got a good nod on that one. How about, I recommend that, that we go with Rita's recommendation on Commerce Bank. Is everyone giving a nod of four on that? Great.
I, 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 what I am agreeing to, I think, is that we let Rita make that decision, the best decision.
Sure, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's just she's asking for our preference on which lender. Thanks. That sounds like we have just gotten through that discussion item. So moving on, we will move to our second and last discussion item of the evening around parking development recommendations.
We're probably going to need about fifteen minutes, and you're nine minutes out from.
Is there, sorry, is there a urgency to this?
No, but you do have citizens who joined, who did email you their public comments, and I believe wanted to give verbal public comments, who have been on for a couple hours now.
Good point.
I mean, talk real fast and.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting until ten fifteen.
Wow, Tanya.
Thanks, Tanya.
Yeah. Good.
Macy?
All right, trustee Corvallon.
Yes.
Trustee Mountain.
John, we can't hear you if you're talking.
I had to switch headsets, yes.
Uh, trustee Severs.
No.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mahon.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes. All right, well.
Trustee Kumsesma.
Protest vote no.
John, Jesse, and Eric, it's your time.
We're just going to tag team this with Mark Hall, Streets Manager, and Britt DeMink, Community Planners Online. I'm just going to run through this real quick with you all. It's in your packet, and I think we did a great job putting in writing. So on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, the board put a moratorium on how, to inform how off-street parking requirements were calculated, the enforcement, as well as the payment to the Commercial Parking Fund. During that time, you directed us to work on identifying some new parking standards and to evaluate opportunities for parking. The Planning Commission formed a subcommittee that was focused on parking, and they offered a recommendation to you all in August that was really focused on where additional parking could be done. Mark and his team did some additional work. Fred Wallace really took the lead, so shout out to him. Really narrowed it into three locations that if the Board of Trustees were to consider wanting to develop these now, it would be Lakeview Drive, all the way down to Rodeo Court, the Old Town Shop behind the Fire Department, and Chapita Park. We identified how many spaces you could do. However, it's important to note, we didn't budget for this. It's not a part of the Streets General Fund or the Streets Fund. So if you wanted us to prioritize this, we would need to budget additional funds, not only for the parking markers, the drainage development, all the earthwork at approximately fifteen thousand, but also we'd be asking staff to work overtime to make this happen because the desire is to not derail any of the current work the Streets already has scheduled. So while we love, and yes, we recognize that there is a need to develop parking, you also have a transportation multimodal plan that is starting that will end April twenty twenty-three. So we recommend, and it's maybe a little unpopular, we recommend waiting. Let the professionals tell us where parking should be developed. There are challenges with each location we've even identified. And so we are not the parking experts. We think that you should wait, let the plan finish, and then out of that plan, we'll have actionable steps with budgets that we can then turn to the twenty twenty-four budget to build. However, if you feel this is a priority, we've outlined exactly what we need to make it happen. Some other cool things that have happened in this conversation is, we are going to keep working on East Third Street. There's parking behind the gas station. Mark and team realized we could do a better job really designating those spaces. That's an easy fix. Boulder County Parks and Open Space, trustee Corvallon had asked, can we talk to the Mining Museum? We did. They said, you're welcome to use that as public parking, no problem. The Netherlands Air Historical Society is considering parking around the steam shovel. Not a ton of spaces, about four, but they're looking at the possibility of us doing that. And Nikki has re-entered into conversations with the Presbyterian Church about bringing back that contract where we would do plowing services in order to use their lot for public parking. We did let that agreement go two years ago because we didn't have the staff, but Nikki feels very confident that they can maintain that contract. So still some work being done, even if you don't develop those spots. The other thing we did is we talked to RTD, and they were like, sure, you can develop a parking garage at your expense. The ridership is not high enough for it to be worth their expense. So they said, yeah, you can expand it, you can build up, do whatever you want. Parking garage costs approximately twenty-five thousand dollars a space, so we're looking at a multimillion-dollar project. I called Dr. Cog and was like, what do you have? They said nothing, but they will keep their eye out. They are aware of other communities building a parking garage with grant funding, so they'll keep us posted. But that is, of course, a very viable option there. Britt did a ton of work on paid parking. She called four different parking, paid parking people, and some caught back to her, some didn't. But ultimately, she spoke in detail with Interstate Parking, and that's who has Idaho Spring. They have their parking, paid parking. We're interested in doing paid parking with them. Gets a little complex, though. There are cost sharing, which is great, but if we're only going to do First Street to do paid parking to start, there's not enough parking there to warrant cost sharing because the cost sharing covers a staff member. So we would probably have to come out of pocket for the staff. So our recommendation is to consider also waiting until the Transportation Master Plan or Transportation Improvement Project finishes. Let the visitor center be repaved, then let's just do paid parking as a whole, so cost sharing actually makes sense. And so we're looking at probably early next year that we could bring paid parking online. And then our last thing is the moratorium. You wanted to know what we thought about doing that. We think you should hold it. We think you should extend it for another six months. Again, let the Transportation Master Plan, the subject matter experts, let them tell us what the appropriate parking count is in the CBD, and whether a Commercial Parking Fund makes sense. So we have a ton of questions before you, which I outlined in the aim. But that's, that written a really fast review.
Expect the transportation multimodal plan to be.
So we're just working through some issues. The plan was to release the RFP two weeks ago, but ran into some issues with CDOT, and they didn't have all of their components in it. So Attorney Madsen is helping us to make sure that it is finalized. We plan to release it next week, and then there's one year, the consultant will have one year to complete the plan. Because it has to be done April twenty twenty-three. I'm sorry, April twenty twenty-four.
Okay, yeah, because you said April twenty-three earlier, and I'm like, well, that's.
April twenty twenty-four, releasing, starting in April twenty twenty.
But the plan will be completed by, at the latest, April twenty twenty-four.
Correct. I think for us, where we feel is, you know, why spend money on developing parking if there really is no plan? Like, for example, the Old Town Shop, we've talked about it a million times, it's a great location, but you're going to have to sign it, and we're going to have to then build the sidewalks to get here. Like, it's just not, it, it has the highest number of spaces, which is why we left it. Yes, we can easily develop it. We understand that, but there are so many more complexities. Same with Lakeview, like, you can't parallel park, you have to parallel park it, you can't perpendicular park it. Signing that, getting people to comply with that. Chapita Park is a bowl. Parking at a bowl is really unique. And just, you know, we'd rather have engineers come in and tell us, here's how you do this, and that could happen under this transportation multimodal plan, than us just winging it just to create hopefully a little bit more parking. Just not sure that that's a great way to spend staff time or money.
How many parking places just got added over at Black Forest?
Oh, twenty, yeah, a little above twenty. I don't know if Barb remembers the exact amount, but a little, about twenty, twenty-four.
That takes a little pressure off.
I think it was eighteen, maybe.
Oh, eighteen.
And then, how, Mark, how many places do you think we can get behind the Quickie Mart?
It's eleven.
Eleven?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're not, we don't have our backs against the wall.
And, and what I could say is, RTD also said, like, anyone can park at RTD. You sign it as pay, as public parking, you then pay per spot. So it's kind of this like, let's just know what's happening here, but do we really want to enter into a formal agreement and pay? I don't remember what, how much it was per spot, but we had to pay like a certain amount per spot.
Don't ask, don't tell.
I know, and that's kind of what they said, like, we know people are parking there, just if, the second you sign as public parking, you have to pay. It's just the rules of RTD.
Um, I understand the hesitation on all the other spots except for Chapita Park, which, why wouldn't we want to improve the parking there? I don't think it takes a genius or an engineer to figure it out, but I don't know.
We do, but you'd have to have parking blockers. You'd have to, those are, those that come at a cost. And there's drainage that has to be addressed. And so I think the biggest concern is, these were not projects the Streets Department planned to do. They really want to address drainage and culverts and, and issues within your neighborhood. Of course, we care about Chapita, but I would argue, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we both argue that these neighborhoods and addressing the issues in these neighborhoods is our number one priority, especially with this new equipment, and Chapita can come, sorry Nikki, but Chapita can come a little bit later.
It's about prioritizing and not taking it out.
Okay.
Too much of the elephant.
Um, well, I, I agree with your recommendation to wait. I, I'm not really thrilled with any, like, towns, the Town Shop is too far away to be useful, I think, unless it's a festival. And then there's, then the Chapita Park, I think, is valuable, because it's close, it's got our little trails that connect and everything. So I would like to see that soon, but I agree that if you don't have the budget for it right now, it can wait. I, I was also hoping that we could explore First Street a little bit, like, you know how Ron managed to get that perpendicular, is that the word? Parking by his lot on First Street. I wasn't there until he made his parking lot. That is town, town land. I don't, I'm curious if that could happen all the way down First Street.
Longer discussion.
Yeah. Oh, I know, but it's something I wanted to discuss.
I think you're, and you're talking into the, into the neighborhood itself.
Yeah, into, yeah.
Yeah, and, and so I think we, so.
Right away, town right away.
Yeah, Mark did look at that, and Mark, I'll let you, but I think the width, but go ahead.
I think one of the big things is that we have a lot of landowners who live down First Street that park on the side of the road that do not have driveways. And we've went there quite a few times just to take a photo of just on a normal day, or even on like a weekend when all of these residents are home. And most of their front yards next to the road are parked out. So I almost feel as though, not only is it not viable to reclaim the right of way to now take away their residential parking, the amount of work that we would have to do to do that would be pretty, like, it would be significant to try to go through all of that as well. Probably more so than Chapita Park or.
Gotcha. Now, wasn't, in Chris Pelletier's plan, wasn't he planning on doing that on West First Street?
Yeah, so.
But that seems unfair to do it to those houses.
There is.
Well, we shouldn't do it there either, then.
There's more room, though, on West First Street. That is wider, and that is a part of the Transportation Improvement Project. There's this section on the map that's purple, it's like twenty some odd spaces. The hope was that the DDA would support us with funding that after TIPS was all wrapped up. And so I do think that's still viable parking because.
But people park there for their houses there, too.
But West First Street, so when you park parallel there, you're only getting a handful, it's like four spots, but if you perpendiculared, it's almost twenty.
Right.
And so it's a very different impact. And again, the width is so much larger there versus the East First Street, that neighborhood. I mean, it's.
There's not enough room to do perpendicular parking.
Tight there, and so I do think the west is still worth consideration, but like, you know, a little bit, I'm liking this, like, don't bite off more than you can chew, you know, the elephant analogy. Because really, we have to finish TIPS. We have TIPS, we have SMS, Mark is getting new equipment, he wants to do drainage, culvert. Like, adding in, like, oh, and build out parking is a huge ask for a team of four. And so I just want to be mindful that, like, yes, I agree we have a parking crisis, but I'm not sure that these, addressing these like little pocket areas makes sense when we have this major plan coming forward that will give us better guidance on what to do.
And it is five after ten.
Yeah, we have until five.
I thought we went to five, to ten fifteen.
Right.
I got, I have one more thing in.
She does have a very quick thing to remember.
I'll take it real fast.
Do the, the property lines, sorry, on that parcel, that's Lakeview and Rodeo, do the property lines match up with Big Springs Park? Is that all one piece of town property, or is it, is there something in between there?
So we're just going to park out the street. Are you talking?
There, well, the map has the triangle of land there.
It does, but we're not talking about parking that out.
Okay.
So we're just talking, parking the street out. That was one recommendation by the Planning Commission. But again, kind of like the Old Town Shop, it's like so far out there.
Yeah.
And, and we're not looking to invest in wayfinding. We want to respect what the DDA is doing with wayfinding. You know, there's just a lot of components when it comes to parking and transportation that I think we need to let these other pieces fall into place, and then be like, okay, now we're ready to develop parking because we have the effective signage, trails, all these other things to truly park out the exterior parts of town. Where right now, I would hate to be a visitor parking way deep outside of town. I mean, like, now where do I go?
No.
That's kind of what we're asking.
In fact, that, that would seem more logical if we were going to do a more, you know, official park there, right? Like, I mean, and I, I was just going to say to Jesse, or who, if there's any other pro sappers and parks folks here, that if we're going to do parking there, I think it should be attached to a parks project more than anything.
I wonder if we can move to public comment and then come back, wrap it up. Kathleen has her hand up, Jim Reese does, and. Oops, sorry, in the room first, we're going to go in the room. Three minutes, everybody. Kayla, you can go first.
Kay Levin's, twelve fifty Eldora Road. I think you guys are trying to put lipstick on a pig. Three places here, and three places here, and three places here is not going to solve the parking problem in Netherlands. And without addressing the elephant in the room, I know a place that's planning on building at least two hundred parking spaces for you. If you're a tourist coming into town, you're not going to walk blocks and blocks and blocks to get to a business. They need to be able to park in front of what restaurant or what store they want to walk in, or a very short distance. One thing, since we're going into tourist season, is to make sure that maybe we have a plan for the people that work in town or work in the businesses, that they park in these more further out accessible parking lots, and either carpool in with one, or, or walk in, or, but how many spaces, Miranda, do you think are taken up by town staff behind the visitor center all day long?
Uh, so we maintain four spots.
Okay, so four spots rotating all day long, that's a lot of parking, that's a lot of tourists, that's a lot of money coming into the town.
And we have talked about under Transportation Improvement Project because we, reminder, we do lose spots. The town staff may work with.
And the same thing with encouraging the businesses to not have their employees park on First Street or right in front of their businesses. I mean, make it kind of almost, you can't make it mandatory, but to suggest that if you don't park here, maybe someone will park there that will come in and buy lunch at your business, or buy a rock at the rock shop. So please keep in mind that I think you're, you know, they're just, you don't have enough space in town. So when you talk about infill, 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 do you want to put houses there, or do you want to put parking there? Choices. You only have this much space in town, and how do you want to allocate using it? Thank you.
Thanks, Kayla. Any other, Steve? Okay, J, okay, Jim, go ahead. Steve's here, but he's going to have you speak for the PC. Jim, go ahead.
Hello, Jim Reese, sixty-six Barker Road, Netherlands. Linda Glasser and myself were part of the Planning Commission Parking Subcommittee. And, you know, it's taken so long for us to bring this back around. I want to kind of just give you a quick reminder that there was some urgency in the wake of the last couple of frozen dead guy days that we had to get some parking developed, okay? And there was, the whole plan had, there was multiple things that came into, to be part of it. It was a parking moratorium because there was concern that the businesses in the central business district did not have anything to offer. And so it wasn't fair to continue to be asking them to provide parking when there isn't any available. Developing the additional lots, which we identified twenty possible spots, but two, as you'll recall, I've given this presentation three times to the plan, or to the BOT, two were easy hanging fruit that was going to go in addition with wayfinding, signage, and walkability that was going to show everybody where these outlined parking areas were, the Town Shop and Rodeo Court, Lakeview Drive all the way, and it's from rodeo court to the end. I think there was a little confusion on how this was presented because we were able to count as many as sixty possible spots going from Rodeo Court to the dead end on Lakeview Drive. And I think that some of that information got changed from, from Rodeo Court. some of that information got changed from, from rodeo court back to Chapeeta Park, but that's not what the intent was. And then paid parking was going to then come in to provide some revenue in the visitor center and on First Street. And that was going to then push people that didn't want to pay for parking out to those further areas. So this was a overall four key part plan that was gonna work together. And now we're talking about, hey, you know, we need to, uh, you know, develop just these couple or three things. Well, it was supposed to work together. Regardless of that, I'm gonna tell you that the public gets frustrated when, you know, we keep pushing this out. Now we're talking about not even looking at this again until April of 2024. And again, I'm gonna say, take the low hanging fruit. Develop the town shop site for the case when we do have need overflow parking, or if you're gonna only do one, do rodeo court. There's supposed to be a pump track developed down there anyway. You put that parking down there from, from, on Lakeview Drive from rodeo court to the, to the end, that's right in front of where they want to develop that pump track in the next couple of years. And that's only a 10 minute walk all the way to the center of town. So I, I'm just saying, you know, when you say, hey, you know, we ought to wait, push this down, we don't have the funding, I think that the BOT runs the risk of looking like they never take any action on these things. And to put $12,500 down for some overtime, to go ahead and get a couple of things done on this and advance the ball, I think is important for the symbolism alone. Okay? That, that's my point there. Thank you.
Can I just offer a quick point of clarification? That the Streets team was in possession of the Planning Commission's, uh, presentation, and it's, it's really them moving to their expertise. And then that's where they determined that Lakeview all the way down to the end was not as feasible as just going straight to rodeo court. So it's not that it wasn't evaluated. Everything on the Planning Commission recommendations was evaluated. But at this point, we then kicked it over to the Streets Department to really bring in their expertise of what was gonna be realistic and feasible for them and their capacity and the equipment that they have.
Um, people park there anyway.
Confirmation, I appreciate that.
They do park on Lakeview, but not all the way to the end, like the end, end of Lakeview.
Because it needs to get plowed out a little, like, like, what's the word?
Grated out. Yeah, and you end up too far away from major, you know, businesses that it's gonna feel like you're parking out residents. Most, most visitors are likely not gonna go deep into a residential area to park unless there's an event. But just like-
Well, and the plan was for it to be angled parking, not just, you know, uh, parallel parking. It was gonna be building up that edge and doing angled parking all the way down. But at the time, again, we still had frozen dead guy days, was still part of our town. And we were looking at having to have immediate capacity for up to 160 cars. Uh, and that was where this came from. If that pressure is off, maybe, uh, the situation has changed.
So we got, it's 10:13. We need to extend if we're going to. We've got two more, three more people want to make a comment, and then I don't think we need much time when we come back. And Miranda, one thing at the end, I'd like to make a motion to extend till 10:30.
Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you. Amazing.
Mayor Billy?
Yes?
Trustee Severs?
No.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Kumsizmo?
Yes.
Mayor Bertamahol?
No.
Uh, Trustee Corvelon?
Yeah.
And Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think everybody should stand up for the rest is until 10:30.
So, um, Charlie, just so I could read your name, go ahead and, uh, um, just comment.
I'd like to speak, Ron Mitchell.
Hello, my name's Charlie.
There's some hands up. Charlie, W?
Yes, Charlie Woodcock is my name. Um, uh, resident here in Netherlands. Uh, I live directly opposite the Old Town Shop site and have for seven years. Um, I have some deep concerns about putting in the 80 space parking lot right in the middle of a residential neighborhood that's, obviously it's on the list. Um, we have houses that border every side of that Old Town Shop site, as you know, and so many people would be affected by this. Um, when we moved here seven years ago, we were told that the Old Town Shop site would be for houses. So we moved here in this neighborhood knowing it was gonna be residential. So this is difficult to hear about potential for 80 parking spots outside our front door. Um, it'll be a lot of coming and goings. And the main concerns I have are, just as a resident right here, are noise, cars doors slamming, music blaring, car engine noises, people not respecting that this is where someone's everyday life is happening, um, light pollution potentially, um, no public restrooms, takes a little imagination to assume what people will do, as there's no restrooms here along all the hedges, um, the stream that's there, potentially our front yards, uh, in that area. And I have concern about obviously increasing crime, um, potentially due to the transient nature of a parking lot and that we'd be inviting lots of people into this residential area, uh, especially if we're out of town, our house could be easy picking. So as a resident here, I, I do have these concerns. I'm also concerned about obviously the route to town not having any proper pavements, sidewalks, um, at the moment. Um, so really just, um, appealing to the board to, uh, put themselves in our shoes as residents here in a residential area, um, with this space. And, um, having said that, I hope that a stable use for the Old Town Shop site can be worked on. Um, I know it's something that needs to be done, and I hope it can be something that fits within this residential neighborhood and not, uh, these parking spaces that's been put out there as an idea. And, uh, thank you. Thank you for letting us voice our concerns. Uh, it means a lot to us.
And, and Mayor Parvi, excuse me, my name's Chris Grau. I also live here at 470 Colson. And while I have no other points, um, to raise that Charlie didn't bring up, I just wanted my voice to be heard as opposition to a, uh, parking structure, uh, at the Old Town Shop site. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for, um, Charlie and, and Chris is just, uh, in terms of what would be your ideal use of that space as neighbors?
So, some sort of medium density housing would be our ideal.
Something stable. Um, it's unstable, it is unsettling, sorry. Living here, we do this probably every six months where we, it's great that this is being discussed and that we're involved. Um, appreciate that. But it's been somewhat of an unsettling seven years to, when we were first looking at moving here, we were told it was definitely earmarked for residential is what we were expecting. And then we've done this now every six months to a year. We have these discussions where thankfully you let us voice our opinions, but it's unsettling to not knowing what's going on with that. Um, and something stable in there would be really, really good.
You prefer housing to a park then?
Uh, a park would also be nice, yes. Um, you know, just something like Charlie said, stability instead of transitory. And something that fits a residential area. Um, yeah, where people live their everyday lives.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thanks, Charlie. Thanks, Jesse. Um, Kathleen, or actually, Ron?
Um, I have repeatedly said publicly that I'd very much like to work with the town on joint parking, uh, development. I'm a little disappointed that this, uh, was presented tonight and, uh, I wasn't, uh, invited to, uh, give any input. Uh, and, uh, I'm gonna go forward with my plan for pay parking, uh, and any, uh, result. Second thing I'd like to say is that over the years on Lakeview, I have parked cars on the south side of Lakeview and left the normal parallel parking on the north side vacant because the town right away along the south side does give enough space to totally pull cars off, uh, on the south side. And, uh, but there's ruts and berms and bumps and, uh, gullies, uh, but that could be all smoothed out. And you could probably get, my estimate, about 40 cars, uh, from, uh, uh, Conger Street all the way to, uh, the, uh, housing, uh, intersection there. Uh, and, uh, I did it. It just wasn't, it was awkward because it wasn't, uh, graded correctly to do it. But people with large cars, Jeeps, and, uh, high centered vehicles, uh, were selected to park along there. And we actually did park them along the north side too. So at one point I had over 100 cars parked during the, uh, frozen dead guy, uh, celebration on Lakeview Drive. And I, I agree with the gentleman that spoke about doing that first. I think that'd be pretty easy. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Kathleen?
First off, I want to say the meeting is actually posted from 8 till 11 tonight. So I don't know if you need to be extending like you are. Um, Kathleen Chipai, 32 year resident, 20 year business owner, live off East Magnolia. Um, I'm against any parking aside from festivals over by the Old Town Shop. Doesn't make any sense. And it's kind of strange to me to see that to be brought up when the Planning Commission had said that, or refused to change the zoning for Ron Mitchell's lots on First Street that are actually bordering the Central Business District where we are lacking parking. Um, but I'm also, uh, upset at the way the aim ends. It says that we should, um, consult, I guess, the, the people doing the traffic or traffic flow study right now. We should consult them on what our code should say, uh, when it comes to parking in the Central Business District. I just, I don't know what people aren't understanding, but, uh, five, in five different ordinances in the history of the town in Netherlands, five different ordinances that all address CBD parking, all exempted the CBD from any parking requirements for over 100 years now. So, uh, the, the buildings have been built, property line to property line. We can't force anybody to put parking in the CBD. And here we have Ron Mitchell with an empty lot, and he's being, uh, told he can't add any more parking spaces unless the zoning changes the commercial, which he borders. And, and we just heard the Planning Commission, and I even heard Jim Reese two meetings ago, the reason Ron put up his fencing is we heard that, that Jim Reese said there is no parking problem in Netherlands. We do have a parking problem. We need the parking in the Central Business District. And I'm pleading that we don't consult, uh, anybody. We're not idiots. We can read our own ordinances. Everything, the parking was exempt in the CBD for 100 years. You can't all of a sudden require it of business owners, but we have Ron with an empty lot right there bordering the CBD. So I would just pray that we can screw on our thinking caps and realize the best place to parking is to do whatever it takes to allow Ron to have his lot on First Street become parking. And that will significantly, uh, help the, the Central Business District where the parking is needed. And I, I'm, again, may Gerald, uh, and Deb, Deandra's comments that were printed, I agree with them, and there should be no parking unless it's for a festival over in, uh, the neighborhood by the Old Town Shop. It just makes no sense. And if you're not willing to include parking on First Street at the CBD level when it's bordering the CBD, how you can make it up to be okay to have parking way down the highway, by no businesses whatsoever, only residential homes, makes no sense. So, and I do support, if we can, throw in any extra parking this year. And I support postponing, uh, the moratorium and the fund because-
Thanks, Kathleen. We gotta get this wrapped up. Um-
Okay, well, they don't make-
Any other public comments?
Hello?
Yeah, he, he, hi. Hearing no other public comments. Um, we'll bring it back to the board.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I heard one of the fundamental issues here is not so much whether or not we should do something. I think that it's of an understanding that we should do something, but this year it has been prioritized to pay attention to the neighborhoods and that there, while there could be benefit to doing something this year, there's also just as much of a detriment to stacking too many things on team staff and then nothing gets done to the degree that people will be happy.
Yeah. And I think, you know, to, and I do want to just address Commissioner or Vice Chair Reese. Now, I supported him. I worked with him with parking. Totally agree. I'm all for it. Just, you know, we also didn't have any member of Streets on that committee at the time. These were areas that we looked at. And so kicking it over to Mark, and Mark really, really being mindful of what his priorities are. This is not a current priority. And then post the Planning Commission doing all their work, came the Transportation Multimodal Plan. So I think it kind of begs the question, why did we apply for those funds if we're just gonna do our own thing anyways and really let it all kind of melt together here a bit more? So, so yes, thank you, Trustee Sterling. We do care a lot about parking. We're just not sure it should happen before the Transportation Multimodal Plan is done.
Um, I agree with you. Uh, but wouldn't fixing the edges of Conger and Lakeview to make it easier to park along the side be part of fixing the neighborhood streets?
I think the big issue that we have is the drainage problem. Uh, since I took over this position in December, I make it a point to call everyone back who has an issue with town. And I would say high 90% of the calls that I receive is about drainage problems here in town. So to me, and the way that I see it, um, grading out those areas to provide parking doesn't necessarily address the drainage issue at hand.
Gotcha.
So that's-
And there's no, yeah. Okay. Well, then I, I mean, I agree with you. Um, if there were time later in the year, I'd love to see Conger and Lakeview graded nicely for parking on the side. Um, it's really rocky and unstable. Uh, and I think we should extend the moratorium.
I'd like a nod of four on the moratorium or, or-
Yes.
Extending the moratorium?
Nod, nod, nod.
And the, yeah, thank you.
Nodding.
Um, any other comments on, on the first? Are we nodding on both things that Tony said?
Uh-
About waiting?
Oh.
Uh, about basically following the town, uh, basically following the town's recommendation based on the fact that they just see the issues with their own bandwidth and their own priorities of holding off for a permanent decision on this?
I mean, I would really love to see Ch- Chapeeta parking lot redeveloped.
Yeah, I mean, I would too.
Waiting on that feels, I don't know, I, I, I guess I don't fully get waiting on that. Um, it seems like we could put some blocks in the center there, make it parkable.
The big problem with the parking blocks though is when it comes to plowing, it would make it significantly difficult to do so, which is why when we're looking into this and researching it, we're trying to find viable ways of, of making these markers where I could, the Streets team or the Parks team could just plow it over top of it, but they're still marked out to be able to be parked, which is kind of a difficult thing in these kind of gravel dirt areas.
Got it. Yeah, I mean, and I just, just, uh, I'm sorry, but Jim, you know, was, has been on the call for a really long time and contributed a lot to this. And I just want him to know that I think that the plan as laid out in having these multiple points, which is develop additional parking in other sites, I'm not saying the sites that are listed here, but just developing additional parking, putting paid parking downtown, uh, doing all these things in concert with each other absolutely makes sense. And I think we should continue on the path towards doing that. It's just gonna take a little bit longer than I think we all wanted it.
I mean, maybe we could come back in a couple of months and talk more when we're not so rushed.
Yeah.
Because we're losing Fisherman's Lot this year. And I know people don't think people use it, but they use it. I mean, I would like to come back and talk about it. Wouldn't, we have more time?
What, what do you need?
I think my, my only other thing is, does it maybe a nod of four that you want to wait on paid parking? Because otherwise the cost is gonna be higher to us because we can't go cost share if we just do First Street only.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we're not ready yet.
Yeah, we have, that's definitely not happening tonight. Anything else you need from us?
Um, no. I don't think so. Are we good? Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for your time, Mark and Rita. And everyone. Um, so you have one more thing you want to throw in? It's 10:21.
We're gonna go fast. Um, I sent you all an email. The town is interested in, we've actually already ended our contract with Text My Gov. It was not an efficient service. We're interested in going with Granicus for an engagement HQ program, which will allow really great engagement with the community. We are not asking you for money. We are asking you for the authority for me to sign the contract because if we don't sign the contract, I can't maximize on the 10% discount and the delayed billing they're offering us. Normally we bring you contracts, but again, this can all be done in the general fund and the money already budgeted under Text My Gov and some other professional services. So I just need you to make a motion to give me authority.
A motion to give Miranda authority.
I move to delegate authority to Town Administrator Miranda Fisher to negotiate and to approve an agreement with Granicus for engagement HQ program.
Second.
Macy? Macy?
I'll give it to Eric because Nicole had a few tonight.
Believe it in the score.
Share the love. That's good.
Thanks.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahol?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
And Trustee Kims Isma?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I've moved to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone. One other, congratulations, Miranda, one more time, and go ahead.
There's already a motion in a second.
All right.
Yes, just quickly before the vote, I've, people didn't hear, they were congratulating Dr. Fisher on achieving her PhD, successfully defending her dissertation, and we're very proud of her.
Yes, we are.
So now.
Good job.
You do have a doctor in town.
It's a doc.
All right, so can I please get the motions again?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Severs and Sterling. All right.
All in favor?
Yes.
Trustee Mountain?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahol?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
And Trustee Kims Isma?
Yes.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned at ten thirty-two PM.
Thank you.
Have a great.